Welcome and good evening. Whoa, that's a pretty high welcome. Try that again. Welcome and maybe a little more volume? Just a little more volume. One, two, three. Can you hear me okay out there? Not too loud? Thank you. Welcome and good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Morro Bay. We are here at the Vets Hall. It's Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, 5:30 PM. We do have a quorum of council members and I will call the meeting to order and ask in your own way if you would take a moment of silence. Thank you. And Councilmember Addis, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On November 19th, 2019, the City Council approved in closed session by a vote of 4-0-1, with Councilmember McPherson absent, a settlement agreement with Mr. Todd Gailey and authorized the city manager to execute the same on behalf of the city. Mr. Gailey has executed the settlement agreement. The substance of the settlement agreement is Mr. Gailey withdraws his appeal of his December 4th, 2018 involuntary separation from the city, resigns his employment effective December 4th, 2018, provides the city with a general release of liability and waiver of rights, and receives a lump sum of $80,000, less all required deductions and taxes. A copy of the fully executed settlement agreement is available at the city clerk's office. That concludes the closed session report.
And thank you for that report. We'll go to councilmember reports. Who'd like to start us off? My left? Councilmember Addis, thank you.
Just an invitation for the public that the Women's March is coming on January 18th. It's a Saturday, 10:00 AM at Mitchell Park in San Luis Obispo, and we are looking for volunteers. So if you're interested, you can find out more at womensmarchslow.com.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis. Dawning the esteemed hat.
The traditional Christmas garb, yes.
Quite nice.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to recognize two of our special Morro Bay citizens, John and Gail Martin. John is one of our valuable members of the Citizens Finance Committee, and I thank him for his service. Gail Martin recently volunteered to help Jennifer Little update the Morro Bay mural mile map. Gail and John walked the entire town and they took two new photos of each of our 23 wall murals. And then Gail created this map showing the location of each one. And on the back of the map is a photo of each mural with a description, the address, the artist, and the year that the mural was done. These murals are a great treasure for our town, and I really appreciate the work that Gail and John put into the map. The map is available to residents and visitors at the visitor center, and it can also be downloaded at the tourism website, morrobay.org. Gail sits on the Arts Center Board, and I am grateful that she and John took on the job of cataloging these great murals and creating this map. So thank you, Gail and John. And next Saturday is breakfast with Santa from 8:30 to 11:30 at the Morro Bay Community Center. There will be a pancake breakfast, crafts, games, gingerbread houses, and Santa Claus will be there. Ages 2 and under are free. There are family-packed tickets available. Two adults and two children are $25 if you pre-register and $35 at the door. And there are also separate prices for adults and children, but I don't remember what they are. So I will be there serving breakfast, so I hope to see all of you there as well with your little kitties.
Will you be dawning your hat?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. That'll be great. Again, welcome and good evening. Wanted to just advise you that we have a number of advisory board vacancies that are coming up, and we will be going through an appointment process. You can go on the city's website if you're interested in serving on a number of our different volunteer committees that are available. I would encourage you to speak to our city clerk tonight if you're interested, and she can give you further information about that. Dana, when does that open up? And what's the timing on the ending of that? I probably should know that, but...
Recruitment opens tomorrow through January 3rd, and we anticipate interviews will be held on January 14th.
Great, thank you. Also, just a short report on our short-term vacation rental Blue Ribbon Committee appointed by the city manager with the facilitators, Councilmember Addison, myself, I mean, Councilmember McPherson, looking to my left or right, and myself. We have met now about four times. A very good group, gotten through about three-quarters of requirements for the ordinance and are moving to try to complete our work in January. And so that group, I mentioned their names at the last meeting, won't mention them again, but I just want to thank them personally for the many hours. And also thank our city manager, Mr. Collins, for his background information that he supplied and all of the work that he's done for that. Lastly, I understand the Thanksgiving Day feed was a great success to all of our community members that were involved in serving for all of the view that were attending. Thanks for making that a very successful outreach event for the community and a good time of fellowship and fun and food for many. So thank you. Councilmember McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the short-term vacation rental ad hoc committee, right now, the public may weigh in, and you should have received in your water bill a survey that asks the public to make their own comments about what they'd like to see in the ordinance. And there's also a survey on Polco, and I'm going to ask our city manager to give the website for the Polco survey, but don't vote both places, just one or the other. So either fill out the handwritten survey or go online and do it. And do you have that?
And that information is?
The Polco's website.
Yeah, write it down. It's HTTPS colon slash slash, and then it's polco.us/morobay. And if you've never used the service before, click Sign Up, and you just provide a few pieces of information, and you're able to take the same survey.
Thank you.
And to add to that, we've received over 100 responses on the Polco survey, and we're getting a lot of responses via mail as well, and we can combine those together all in one database and share that information.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
Yes, I would like to thank all the advisory committee members who have worked so hard on all the advisory committees for the past year, hundreds of hours put in by volunteers. It's greatly appreciated by me and other members of the city staff and council. And I was unable to attend the ceremony when certificates were given out last night, but want to take this moment to thank everybody. I also would like to recognize Chief Knuckles for responding so quickly to a little emergency in a neighborhood. While I was out of town, I got a phone call from a neighbor who said, "The power pole behind your house is on fire." So I was concerned, but not as much as the neighbors who saw it. I followed up with Chief Knuckles, and he immediately gave me a prompt explanation of what happened when and how it went down. I also have been in touch with PG&E, and they've responded in writing to how they handle this kind of situation. And I just want to thank you for addressing the issue promptly and succinctly, and I greatly appreciate it. The other thing is, I do have a radio show that two or three people listen to. The next show is Saturday, December 21st, from 2:00 to 2:30 on our FM station, 97.3 107.9. I will be talking about the fiscal budget, specifically expenses, the fiscal year budget 1920. Please tune in if you have absolutely nothing else to do. And I'd like to wish happy holidays to everybody. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. And our city manager, any reports?
Yeah, so I was going to talk about the Polco survey, but Ms. McPherson covered that. So I did want to inform the community on our website under Hot Topics, the front page. There's a link to a press release regarding the results of the recent community survey that was conducted in October and November in our community. Basically, the summary of the summary, if you will, is that our community values the core services that are provided by the city on their behalf. They understand there's a need for additional revenues to keep those services at their levels, and we'll be starting a process early next year to engage or expand the engagement with our community on their priorities and the needs of the city. In addition, Mr. Graham wanted to give an update on the housing element, and I believe Mr. Knuckles wanted to talk about an upcoming workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Yeah, I'd like to announce that we do have our first Housing Elements Update Workshop this coming Thursday, December 12th, at 6:00 PM at the community center in the multipurpose room. We also have a survey out. It went out in the utility bill mailer, and we're receiving those daily from our citizens that are responding to it. And we also have that posted online on the front page of our website under Hot Topics, so you can take the survey there. And I think we'll also have that available at the workshop for folks to fill out if they haven't had an opportunity to do so. Definitely, we invite you to come out and weigh in on all things housing. So that's kind of what we have going on on Thursday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. We're going to be having another CERT class, Community Emergency Response Team class, through a sterile-based CERT organization. And it's going to be another hands-on class that's going to talk about how to secure utilities, some firefighting skills, medical skills, hazardous materials, terrorism awareness, search and rescue techniques, and most importantly, self-reliance for you and your neighbors for up to 72 hours. This class is going to be in January, or it's going to be starting January 14th. It'll be every Tuesday, Thursday after that. There's a total of five classes, runs 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at the fire station. And so far in our county, we have trained over 1,500 individuals, with 700 of them part of our sterile plan. So we, almost half of the trained CERT members, live in the communities of Cayucus, Morro Bay, and Los Sosos. So if you've got any questions about the class or want to sign up, stop by the firehouse or give us a call at 805-772-6242.
Thank you for those reports. And with that, that ends the reports. Now, a very important part of our program, we do have a service presentation for our employees. Mr. Collins, and I'll ask council to come down and join us in the ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Scott Collins, city manager. This is one of my more favorite opportunities in the year to talk about the great work that the city staff does on behalf of management and our leadership in the city, as well as our community. You don't typically get to see them here in these meetings. It's your executive staff that come here, but the folks who do the real deal work, you know, go unsung most of the year. And thankfully, council has allowed us to provide these opportunities to recognize folks who reach milestone periods in their career, whether it's 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, even some all the way up to 40-year pins, service pins with the city. So we do have eight folks who've reached those milestones this year, five of which are present here tonight. And so we're just going to work our way through it and then have an opportunity to take a picture with all of us together. So first up, I'd like to call up Dustin Pittman, who's a utility operator for the Public Works Department. So Dustin, again, the utility operator for the Public Works Department. He was hired by the city in 2009 as a water system operator 2, and then was promoted to water system operator 3 in 2012, and then reclassified as utility operator last year in anticipation for the new Worf facility. He knows our water system inside and out. He's certified in all the important components of water treatment and distribution. He has a great sense of humor, and he adores and loves his family who are here tonight. So thank you, Dustin. And then we have three individuals who we recognize who can't be here tonight. Alex Tapia, who's a utility operator of Public Works. Micah Sapinski, who's a firefighter paramedic, 10 years. And then Mike Wilcox, who's our consolidated maintenance superintendent for 10 years. So thank you to them. Next up, I'd like to call up Fire Chief Steve Knuckles. So he's Mr. Fire himself. In fact, I heard there's a rumor out there that he was born on a fire truck. He lives and breathes the service. He's up late at night conjuring up horrific scenarios and develops contingency plans to address those instead of sleeping, of course. We appreciate all that advanced planning. He's a fixture in our community beyond being an exemplary leader of his fire department. He's also a leader in our community and leader at the city. And even though he resides in Atascadero, which I give him endless grief over, he really should be here in Morro Bay, but we appreciate all you do for our town, even though you don't live here and all the things that you do for our community. We really do value your leadership, and thank you so much for all you do, Steve. All right. Janine Burlingame, Management Analyst for the Public Works Department. So Janine is a 25-year vet of the city. She started in 1994 and worked her way through office, city clerk positions to office assistant all the way up to a highly-vaulted administrative analyst for Public Works. She's basically catch-all for all the things that they tried to get done, whether it's transportation, garbage. You know, she's been involved in every aspect of transportation, also assisting the city in the finance department. And the work that she's done has really helped provide over 2 million passenger trips in our city's transit and trolley system, which is an incredible feat, and we couldn't have done it without you. And so thank you so much for your work. All right, next up, Lori Goforth. So Lori has been with the city for 25 years in the Personnel Department, but she started in 1994 as an administrative clerk in finance, and worked her way through up into accounting and did that kind of work, and then changed careers midstream in 2012, became our Human Resources Analyst. And that's really, again, unsung work. It's incredibly important. She is the face of our organization when we're trying to promote people within and to bring people from outside the organization in and explaining how our culture works, how our community works, how the city council and city manager work. And has done a phenomenal job in a very tough market in bringing several new police officers to the city and a lot of other key positions. She is our HR guru, and she's probably the nicest person I've ever met, and I'm honored and delighted to work with her every single day. So thank you. And last, but definitely not least, we have Scott Subler, fire engineer, I'm sorry, actually fire captain for the fire department. Come on up. Mr. Subler, he was hired by the city in 1989 as a part-time reserve firefighter and became a full-fledged firefighter in 2001. That shows just tremendous dedication to the service while he was doing other work in the printing industry. Was promoted to fire engineer in 2003. And based on the leadership and competency that he demonstrated all those years, in the last fire captain selection process, he was promoted to fire captain. He's an honest and sincere guy. Tells you the truth no matter what. We look forward to his leadership and continued commitment to the community. Thanks so much, Scott. I'd like to bring everybody up one more time to have a group photo with city council, if you don't mind.
Congratulations again to all of our employees for many, many, many years of service. The top was 25 or 40?
30 years for Scott Subler.
30 years. It's a long time. Congratulations. With that, that brings us to our Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report, and I believe Ms. Crawford is here, our president and CEO of our chamber. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Wait for this. I'm going to talk very quickly, and I apologize in advance. Quite a bit of data today. So thank you very much for having me, honorable counsel and city staff, mayor. My name is Erica Crawford. I'm the CEO of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, and my message today is that Morro Bay is open for business. This is our quarterly presentation. This is a message that Scott Collins, the city manager, and I delivered at the Local Economic Development Council meeting, which is a Cal Poly group. And we are the city of yes, and that's our message. So can we move? Here we go. But before we get into all of the data, I just want to update you on our organization. So we are a C6 nonprofit. Our volunteer leadership has transitioned for 2020 as anticipated. We have four new board directors, including Jeff Echols, Sophia Toly, Ana Patel, and Erin Young. We also have an incumbent who's sticking around for another three years called Lorraine Sturkle. They'll be joining directors in restaurant, professional services, planning and development, and accommodation. You'll see we have more retail this year on our board. We're sad to say that we'll be losing Cindy Edwards and Ken McMillan, who have both served for six years on our board of directors, and Richie Wimmer this year. And I also have new staff. Catherine Gillan, who you'll all remember, was a very joyous and exuberant and amazing member relations manager for us, has retired. She's definitely still in the community, so give her a hello. And we have hired a director of development called Lisa Barr. She's brand-new to our community, has incredible skills. She will be covering the scope of membership and really adding value to membership through our programming. And we have Lauren French, who started as an intern with us just a few months ago, and now he is my economic development assistant, part-time, and he's doing a great job. We are also entering our recruiting season for committees. Our Governmental Affairs Committee, you'll know well, been very active this last year as the inaugural class. So we'll have a few seats open for that. And we'll also be expanding our ambassadors program under the leadership of Lisa. Quick reminder, we are a three Cs organization. These are our lines of effort. We're always looking to be a catalyst for business growth, a champion for a strong community, and a convener of leaders and influencers. Annually, we retreat as a board. This year is the first time we had outgoing and incoming directors retreating together. During our strategic planning, we considered introducing a fourth C for this election season, civility. So our lines of effort will be conducted within the environment of civility. We use our membership survey as a guide as we continue or kind of consider our strategic direction. So some of our high scores from our members are that our organization is a hub of information. We're innovative and embrace change, and we represent generational diversity in the community. But we do have areas for improvement in 2020. So this is when we're asking our members, "How important is this to you?" And then, "How well does your chamber do in that arena?" The three areas for improvement this year are electing a business-friendly candidate, representing business interests to government, and being a catalyst for business growth. We are not a 501(c)(4), and we do not have a PAC associated with our organization, so we're not going to be endorsing or financially contributing to campaigns. But for the electing business-friendly candidate piece, we will likely be inviting those running for election to a more meet-and-greet intimate audience with the business community this year. We're going to dive into data now. Very grateful to have the partnership going with your city staff and leadership that we do. We've benefited from Scott Graham contributing some information on what you're going to see. Jen Callaway has also contributed information. This looks really much smaller than I thought it would, but these are motel receipts with a trend line. It's, you know, kind of rising, not quite flat. One thing to take note of, is there a pointer on this guy? We're looking at the bottom, and what we really want to see is that the bottoms are increasing, right? And that the tops are kind of increasing. And we're seeing a little bit of a dip here. Vacation rental receipts, very different scale. These are quarterly, by the way. They're going back multiple years. The top here is about $10 million for motel receipts. I'm not talking about taxes here. We're not talking about tax, tourism occupancy tax. When we think about catalyzing business growth, we need to think about the multi-payer effect and the employers in our community. So that's why we're looking at receipts. These are people who are paying people, who are buying goods and services in our community, and we want them to grow. Vacation rental receipts, I think the top line here is about $2 million, so a different scale, showing a very different trend line. Our total sales tax. When I showed this to our Governmental Affairs Committee last week, one of our committee members said, "Those look like shark fins." This is, you know, we are a tourism economy, so we're very seasonal. But if we're thinking about building or expanding our business to consumer businesses, we need to think about that bottom, and we need to think about how we're mentoring businesses who are coming into our community for the first time and how they can kind of deal with this seasonality. We also need to have a conversation about housing and how we can increase the number of consumers here year-round for our businesses. Speaking of housing, our commuter patterns here, this is actually from the EDSP in 2014. On the bottom left, you see that the number of jobs are the people who are working in Morro Bay. 75% of them are coming in to work in our community from outside of the area, and 80% of our resident workforce is leaving our community, including Chief Knuckles, leaving our community. No, no, actually, he's the opposite. He's coming in. But 80% of our resident workforce is leaving for work and then coming back at home at night. So it begs the question, what sorts of jobs do we have here? And how could we activate the 80% who are leaving to tell their, you know, colleagues in other areas, primarily in San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay's place to be? Come on back out, let's meet for dinner out there and kind of drive consumers back to our businesses. Workers in Morro Bay and where they live, you see in Los Sosos is our main feeder for talent, for work talent, and Atascadero. These are building permits and planning permits. I don't want to spend too much time on these, and this is just quantity issued. It's nothing to do with valuation. It's nothing to do with the types, but I wanted to include them. And what can we do with this data? You know, we're not sitting here, excuse me, trying to admire a problem to borrow from the Hourglass Project. We want to be not spinning our wheels while we wait for the big opportunities. We want to take advantage of what we can do now. So in the short term, we're seeing a possibility to do some business-to-consumer expansion and some work-from-anywhere professional expansion. We have a lot of businesses. Rock Harbor Marketing, for one, they're based at home, but they're growing, you know? And these are professional jobs. These are well-paying jobs. And these are consumers for our B2C businesses, and they live here year-round. So we're liking this feedback loop, and this is what we're going to be expanding. In the long term, infill development, streamlining our permit process, or really having a conversation about throughput and understanding what it is right now, doing a deep dive, is something that we value, and that's something that we've been talking about with our strategic partner, the city. And diversifying our economy, becoming a regional sustainability energy hub is something that we're really interested in. Scott Collins and I have talked about it. You know, we've got three major players in our community right now. Vistra Energy, Monterey Bay Community Power, Castle Wind might be coming in. This is interesting to all sit around at a table and talk about how they're going to be participating in our community. And housing, housing, housing. We need to build it. And I'm excited that Thursday is happening, and we have some opportunities. For business retention, we are doing a New Year, Fresh Start mini-workshop series, covering issues like labor law, marketing strategy, social media, CalSavers Retirement Savings Program, which is a mandated program, sexual harassment training, and a Meet the Press. This is for our businesses to sort of jump-start their fresh new year. This will be happening in January and February. And we'll be restarting our partner workshops with SCOR and the Women's Business Center in March, and those are monthly free workshops. We are also doing community leadership programs. The Voices Across the Bay, thank you, Councilmember McPherson, who participated. If we're talking about community leadership, and we're talking about forward progress, and we're talking about civility, we really want to get together as a community. So it's not just business owners who are coming to our leadership programming. Anyone from the community is welcome. Voices Across the Bay, we debuted, and we will be beginning that again in March. And Women Making Waves, we've held twice to date, and we'll be bringing that back in February, covering industries including healthcare, media, athletics, and women and wealth. And finally, for championing our community, we do have a survey up now where anyone in the community can nominate a living treasure or a citizen of the year. It's a nice moment to take recognition. This is the perfect time of year to do it, and you have until Monday at 5:00 PM to do so. If you needed more information, just call us at the chamber to how to get the link. And we have our annual gala coming up at the end of January. And we have our annual gala coming up at the end of January. And I did it in nine minutes.
Wow, that's pretty good.
That never happens.
That's a record. Thank you so much for that.
Any questions?
You can wave. No clapping. Thank you, Erica.
Absolutely.
Just want to see if the Council has any questions for Erica. Great presentation. Could we get a copy of your slides?
Absolutely. And if anybody wants to talk about it in-depth, please let me know. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Next up is our business spot. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, we do have an opportunity for local businesses to come before the City Council and share a little bit about their enterprise and what's going on. And Doug Little is here from Junk Love. Doug, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, and residents of Morro Bay. My name is Doug Little. I'm the owner at Junk Love, located at 699 Embarcadero, across the street from the Garden Gallery. We specialize in home decor of all types with an emphasis on repurposing goods. For those of you who are missing the shop Seashells and Sawdust that was located in the downtown, you can find her items at my shop. I'm also very active in the community, helping with the liquidation of family estates, whether it's downsizing a senior, liquidating a business, or the sale of a complete estate. I can do all that. I sell your estate through my online auction house, which allows you to keep your property private while getting a good price for your items. Stop by and visit Junk Love anytime and say hi. We're located at 699 Embarcadero on the corner of Marina and Embarcadero. And our hours are Sunday through Thursday, 10 to 5, and Friday and Saturday, 10 to 8. And you're welcome to call me personally anytime for more information at 805-821-1154. Thanks for your time, and see you at the shop.
Great. And Doug, do you have a website that you want to mention, perhaps, or not?
We do part of our marketing through just Facebook and different items like that.
Okay, great.
On our Junk Love.
Well, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great evening. With that, I'll go ahead and open up general public comment. This is a public comment for items on the agenda for which you are unable to stay, or items not on the agenda that you would like to bring up with regard to city-related issues. I do ask that you fill out a speaker slip, but that's not required. If you don't want to do that, it just helps us organize and have your name if you want to give it to us. So, first up for general public comment is Barry Brennan. Barry, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. And I wish you all a Merry Christmas first thing. It's been quite a year. Lots more in front of us, and I hope we all can work together to solve a problem. Sorry I won't be able to stay late in the evening, because I'm sure it's going to be. But my point is, the sewer plant has been stopped. There's been, there's a letter in the thing, and our stop has come from government issues, other governments. It's not been slowed down or stopped by any citizen's group. And there's been some illusion that people have alluded to the fact that perhaps the citizen group were slowing it down, and I resent that. Sorry that we haven't been more civil to one another. Maybe this year coming, we can be more civil. The EIR was read by the federal government, and they said, "Oops, we need to consult about that." Well, in my experience, whenever the government wants to consult, you're on their time schedule, not yours. And I think the optimistic estimation of three or four months is very, very optimistic. And I would hope that we can use this period of time where, while the project is reviewed by the fish and wildlife, to really look at what we're doing. The current plan will threaten the estuary. That's what the feds are telling us. It threatens the fish. The current plan threatens the creek that runs alongside Lilac Kaiser Park. I don't know if you saw the rain, what it did, but it washed across the bike path. We had so much water coming through there. I can't imagine what it's going to be like with it, trying to come up and go through there, trying to build on a sewer pipeline. And also, this current plan is a threat to all of the businesses that we need to have so much to make the economy grow in this town on Quintana. The threat to them is dramatic. I'm closely associated with three of them, excuse me, four of them. We've not heard any outreach. We've not heard any outreach. There are other solutions which can be used to satisfy the Regional Water Quality Board. I was, went through a plant tour of our current wastewater treatment plant, and there's a thing called a disk filter that was, will go on to the end of our existing effluent discharge. Will take all of the food waste and get us to tertiary. It's a very relatively inexpensive device, box, think of it like a cargo container, that will meet all of the 401(c), the exception that we have for our waiver. We won't need a waiver anymore because we can meet it right where we are. This is not just my idea. It was actually presented by some other people in the city. So, there are other solutions than what we're doing. There are other solutions that are less expensive, but let's use the time. We know we're going to be three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Appreciate that. Next up for general public comment is Linda Winters. Welcome, Linda. Mobile Home Park Linda, as she likes to be known.
I'm kind of slow tonight. I was helping a neighbor put some furniture together. Hi, everyone. It's been a while. Hope you all had a grand Thanksgiving. I spent mine with a whole bunch of wonderful folks right here in Morro Bay at the Morro Bay Community Thanksgiving Dinner, held at the community center. I shared my time and dinner with 350 other people. Yep, you heard me right. 350 came to sit down and eat. A hundred more came and got their dinners to go. And then, 70 more received their dinners delivered by volunteers from the police department. 520 dinners. Incredible. So extraordinary. And who and how was this made possible? Our very own Nancy Castle was the main coordinator. She kept a crew of 60 volunteers busy with the setup and serving and cleanup. There were Girl Scouts. There were Boy Scouts. Folks walked in from every walk of life, helping up front. And behind the scenes, in the kitchen, Chuck Stoll and his incredible Lions Club crew. These amazing, super extraordinary crew worked from Monday to Thursday, prepping all 60 turkeys and the fixings for this feast. It is unbelievable, the work these folks do, so the rest of us can share their bounties. And we can't forget the businesses and the organizations that contributed to this effort. Albertson's &amp; Spencer's, Mikasa, Casa de Flores, if you had the stuffing, it was extraordinary. Mission Linen, Culligan Water, the Inn at Morro Bay, the Lions Club, the Boys and Girl Scouts, Morro Bay seniors, senior volunteers, crews in Morro Bay. If I forgot anybody, please forgive me. We distributed invitation flyers all over town, including to all of the mobile home parks. So, many of these folks came saying they would have been alone otherwise. During the dinner, we spoke with many of the diners. One couple was from Australia. They could hardly wait to get back home to advertise Morro Bay. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could feel this great feeling of sharing all year-round? Can't wait for next year. Thanks for listening. See you next year.
Thank you, Linda. Next up for public comment is Mary Cieneski. I'm sorry if I didn't do a good job on the last name. I apologize. Welcome, Mary.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Mary Sazinski. I'm a resident of, that's okay, it's Polish, difficult last name. I'm a resident of San Luis Obispo, and I'm here tonight representing EcoSlow, a local countywide nonprofit, the environmental center of San Luis Obispo. I just wanted to quickly comment on the Consent Agenda item, A9, just to share EcoSlow's support in furthering tobacco regulations. Just wanted to share that what we see in Slow County is very similar to what is seen across the state of California, in that the items that we pick up in beach cleanups, cigarette butts make up for about 30% of that waste. And so, not by weight, but by item. And it's a really large number, and it's kind of been hovering around there. And so, we're just supportive of regulations around that, and we're really concerned about the single-use products. We're, in my time with EcoSlow, which has been about four and a half years, vape waste wasn't a concern four years ago. It's now a concern. We're seeing the juice things, it looks like candy, you know? We're seeing cartridges that look like USB drives, and they're out in the natural environment. And so, it's on our radar as something that we're just looking at, and I hope it will continue to be on your radar as a coastal city, in that these single-use products, especially when they're very small, and when they have multiple factors, not just plastic, but possibly batteries and the nicotine juice themselves or whatever, that they become a really, a real big challenge on the waste side of things. So, I just wanted to just share support for this. I appreciate you all looking at this and furthering regulations, but I hope you will consider further regulations when it comes to not only tobacco, but single-use cannabis dispensing as well. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this.
Thank you, Mary. That's the last speak I have for general public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on items on the agenda for which you can't stay or don't have to raise your hand, you can come up, come forward now. These are for items either on the agenda for which you cannot stay or any other items. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Dan Murphy. I'm coming in here today to speak about, probably most people don't notice this, but we've had quite a substantial increase in the number of large jets that are coming in to San Luis Obispo. The airport there has expanded. The planes now are flying basically right over Morro Bay. And this is something that I don't believe benefits our community in any way. It's a threat in some form because of the noise it produces to the habitat of the bay, habitat, the marine life, the birds that are there. And that's one of the reasons people come to Morro Bay, is because they like the natural beauty that is there. Yet now, we have this thing coming in because of growth, which a lot of people are very much for, but we are suffering the consequences of that here in Morro Bay now because of these jets coming in. And they're loud, and they're big. And this is going to continue into the future, and it's going to continue to expand unless we choose to do something about it. So, what can we do? Well, one of the things we could do is the city attorney could put a letter together and submit it to the airport, the regional airport in San Luis, asking them if they can change their flight path. Now, that's, they're probably going to say, "Oh, this is a huge deal." But think about it. You're flying a jet, and you're coming into Morro Bay. Instead of flying right over Morro Rock, you turn the wheel, and you go over to the Santa Lucia Range. And thereby, you're not making noise for our community, and you're also sparing Los Sosos, Los Sosos Valley Road. All those places now are not going to have to listen to a jet thundering in. And these jets, they come in very low when there's fog. They get right down on the deck. They're really noisy. So, this is something I think our community should address, and I think it's important enough to be done in a timely manner. That's all I got to say.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. I do have another speaker slip. Mimi Goldberg for general public comment. Mimi, sorry, I just got this slipped. Come on forward. And welcome.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mimi Goldberg, and I'm totally from Morro Bay. I'm proud to announce that Allgood, an $8 million company out of Morro Bay, is paying employees to pick up trash down at the Rock, and that's a win-win. Now, I have a new agenda, and that is that Morro Bay needs a warming center for homeless people and pets. In 2018, a ruling by the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals restricts cities from prosecuting people for sleeping on public property if no shelter beds are available, which is applicable to Morro Bay. Boise, Idaho requests for U.S. Supreme Court to hear an appeal. Boise in 2009 alleging that the city did not have the right to remove them from the streets when they had no other housing options. A lower court ruled in the city's favor, but the Ninth Circuit reversed that decision and held that the city was criminalizing homelessness on the false premise that the homeless had a choice in the matter. The court accepted the argument that the enforcement actions against the homeless plaintiffs constitute cruel and unusual punishment in violation of the Eighth Amendment. Homeless advocates also argued that police actions give the homeless arrest records, give the homeless arrest records, making it hard for them to find jobs and housing. In Slow Prado, the new homeless shelter will refuse to accept a person even when there are beds available, simply because of restrictions on drug, alcohol use, curfews, and other rules. I understand there needs to be rules, but the only way for some people to survive is to drink if you're an alcoholic. Also, there's plenty, there's plenty that choose to be off the grid, and people with mental illness also. The Ninth Circuit ruled it, "A city can't make it a crime to be a homeless person." December 6, 2019. This is from L.A. List by Matt Tenoco in news. "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise they had a choice in the matter." I want to say, thanks, you guys. I think you're going to hear more of me at more meetings, but just keep that in mind, okay, you guys? Peace out. Woo!
Thank you, Mimi. General public comment is still open for items on the agenda for which you can't stay or any other items you want to address. I have this lady here, and then this gentleman. Welcome.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Ann O'Brien. I am a disabled senior resident of Morro Bay, a homeowner of 25 years. I will be 70 in six months, and I have been smoking tobacco and marijuana since 1966. There's nothing wrong with my heart, my lungs, my organs, with anyone who's ever lived with me. I am here this evening to oppose ordinance number 267 regarding flavored tobacco, vaping, and second-hand smoke. And I object to it on the grounds that it represents the destruction of 16 merchants in this town who serve our tourist popul, you know, seasonal population. And the reason, the way I'm opposing it is I'm saying that the proposed ordinance is a violation of the United States Constitutional Law. Apparently, you haven't read, let's see here, Article 1, Section 8, Clause 3. It's called the Commerce Clause, okay? It is the most far-reaching enumerated power listed in the United States Constitution that states that the United States Congress shall have power to regulate commerce with foreign nations among the states and the Indian tribes. Constitution 1789. Twelve years later, in 1801, the United States Supreme Court, under the guidance of Judge John Marshall, interpreted the Commerce Clause to empower Congress jurisdiction over numerous aspects of intrastate, interstate commerce, as well as other, other... over numerous aspects of intrastate, interstate commerce, as well as other non-commerce issues, okay? During the post-1937 era, the use of the Commerce Clause by Congress to authorize federal control of economic matters became effectively unlimited, possibly a reaction against the Sob Sisters who fomented prohibition, which did not work.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Your time is up.
My name's not Gerlberg.
I'm Ms. O'Brien. I apologize. Your time is up.
All right. I just want to say --
Ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment right to freedom of speech, and you may be facing a lawsuit.
Your time is up, ma'am.
I'd rather have a sewer.
Thank you. Your time's up. I appreciate that.
Sewage is your job.
Next up for public comment, August, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I've never raped. This is a bad decision. 55 years of cigarettes. I'd like to ask that you don't ban the sales of vaping materials. I think history should show us that anytime something illegal is banned, all you do is empower the black market. I think you should keep the sales, take the revenue that's generated for the city, divide it in half, use half to aggressively teach young people about the dangers, give the other half to our effective police department to try and eradicate the black market suppliers in our town. I have some experience with this. I probably served five years in the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I was also the membership specialist when the city agreed to permit the medical marijuana dispensary to Charles Lynch. I'm the one that actually called him and invited him to join the Chamber of Commerce. We had a ribbon cutting. The mayor, chief police, fire chief, half the council was after cutting. What we didn't know was, he was involved in the black market also. He was arrested by the feds. They shut him down. I'm telling you this because when it opened -- oh, I'm sorry. I live on the Embarcadero. I've been in an apartment on the roof of the kite shop for 25 years, so I probably have met all the ne'er-do-wells in the Embarcadero over the years. I heard after it opened that the black market suppliers of marijuana complained that their revenues were cut at least in half the minute that door opened, to where the patients could legally get their medicine. Once it closed, I had then heard that they were ecstatic that it was closed because the revenues jumped right back up. So, I really think that a better way to go would be put an age restriction on the sales, teach the young people, and also, CDC says that the black market supplies are the ones that are really harming. I mean, it's all harmful, but it's like American politics. Sometimes we have to vote for the lesser of the evils. And in this case, I really think that banning this would make it a lot worse than if some other approaches were taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you, August. Mr. Leibig?
Could you turn the heat down just a little bit?
General public comment is still open if you want to come forward for general public comment for items on the agenda for which you can't stay or anything else. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Sean Ayers, and I would like to express my opinion on the ban of the flavored tobacco products. I feel it is an unfair ban on the freedom of choice that we as adults have in this country. It will affect local businesses, businesses that contribute a lot to the local community. It is hypocritical due to the plan to open up weed dispensaries, which I fully support. And, you know, and with that, the choice to, you know, as adults, to, you know, use whatever product we want. That's the freedom of our country. You know, if you want kids to be unable to buy vape products, it's as simple as going online and clicking a button that says, yes, you're 21, and having a debit card. So, banning the sale of tobacco products locally will not affect anything of this. But what do you make a dent in the fact that children will not be able to access vape products? It's as simple as going online and pressing, yes, I'm 21. If you have a problem with it, you know, write the federal government and try and have more regulation on online sales of tobacco products. That's the real kicker. Locally, this doesn't make any sense. I used to work at the smoke shop over there by the music store, and I, you know, no kids came in. No kids came in there. We never sold anything to kids, ever, in my time that I worked there. So, I just want to say, I really hope you guys do not pass this law, and, you know, this will affect, I think, someone mentioned 16 local businesses that would be affected. And we're a very small town, so 16 local businesses is a lot of businesses that would be affected. So, I guess I would just ask the council to not pass this bill because, you know, as adults and as, you know, we live in the United States, and it's a very free country, let us as adults choose, you know, let us have our freedom to smoke, you know, a mint-flavored cigarette. At the end of the day, it's really not going to affect day-to-day life of other citizens in this town. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. A general public comment is still open for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay or anything else. Seeing none, I will close general public comment. Just a couple of potential questions to answer. Mr. City Attorney, if you could address the issue raised by Ms. O'Brien regarding a violation of the Constitution as Article, Section 8, 3, Commerce Clause. Is there an issue with -- are ordinance violating that? I just wanted to clarify that.
No, there is not. The Commerce Clause actually is a federal constitutional, both restriction and also prescription for federal authority to regulate economic activity. However, there is clear federal law and state law that allows the city of Morro Bay to enact the regulations that are being proposed.
Thank you. And then, for Mr. Brandon, who indicated that he's associated with three businesses on the Embarcadero and quote-unquote "has not heard any outreach or about any outreach", could we just comment on what our outreach efforts have been to those businesses for clarification? Mr. Collins or Mr. Leibig?
Sure. Members of the program management team from Corlo and their subcontractor have started meeting with the local businesses along Quintana and have made outreach to many of those businesses. As you'll notice right now, we have some work going on that's moving the design forward, the potholing on Quintana, so we're verifying all the local utilities so that we can refine the design and minimize that impact. So, yes, there has been outreach to many of the businesses. I don't think they've completed that outreach yet.
And there's a plan for more outreach. I understand in the future as well.
More outreach as we move forward, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'll move to the -- did you have a question? Yes. Councilmember Davis, sure.
Yes. Mr. Brandon also mentioned that we could add a disc filter to our effluent and reach tertiary standard. Can someone comment on that?
It wouldn't reach tertiary standards by adding a disc filter to the outlet. They also would require a coastal development permit to construct that, and I believe we've been told several times by the Coastal Commission under no uncertain terms that we are not going to be issued a coastal development permit to construct anything at the existing facility.
Thank you.
And could I also comment on Mimi Goldberg's comment about the homeless shelter? We did submit a grant last year for some state monies to build a -- or to actually transform part of the vets' hall here into a temporary warming shelter, and we do intend to pursue that grant next year. So, we're working on that issue.
And thank you for your work in that direction. We appreciate that. With that, I will move to Item A, Consent Agenda, and open up public comment. I do have a number of speaker slips, so I'll use those first. First up regarding Agenda Item A9 is Erica Crawford. Welcome back, Erica.
Thank you. Just some brief remarks about Item A9. The Chamber's Board of Directors considered Ordinance 627 at its board meeting in late November. It was discussed that in light of our role in representing business interests to government, the Chamber would express to council our concern about the scope of the ordinance. This ordinance does not ban only vaping, but goes much further. Of particular concern, it bans the sale of menthol-flavored tobacco and tobacco products, which we understand to compose a large percentage of sales at the city's tobacco retailers. We recommend that council not approve the second reading of Ordinance 627 and reintroduce a modified ordinance at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public comment regarding A9 is Jan Goldman. Jan, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm concerned about the city's prohibition of the sale of flavored vaping products also. Where does the prohibition of the sale of flavored tobacco products end? Are menthol cigarettes included in this too? Even though I don't use these products, I'm opposed to the prohibition of them because prohibition does not have a successful track record, among other things that leads to underground, unregulated manufacturing, which may be more dangerous than the current product. The sale of these products is currently legal. Prohibiting the sale of legal products and then imposing more fees on business license holders is very unfair to the business. Maybe the sale to minors needs to be more strictly enforced. Maybe this is an item that needs to be dealt with on a higher level than just at the city. I have no objection to the restriction of the use of tobacco products in public places, but the prohibition on the sales of the product doesn't seem like it's the best solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Next up for public comment is Thomas Kealan. Thomas, welcome.
Mayor, Council, my name's Thomas Kealan. I'm a Morro Bay homeowner gratefully for 20 years, and I'd like to address the subject of the ban on vape products. The name I'm being called a lot lately is old, and while that might be chronologically true, I am about 38 in spirit. I know a lot of young people, and they use this word diversity and stereotype as become the sin de jour. We used to call it pigeonhole, and we have diverse groups other than ethnicity. We have dog owners, cat owners. We have smokers, non-smokers, drinkers, non-drinkers. This diverse group is kind of being picked on now, and I think the vape thing, I wish they had it in my day. I'm an ex-smoker, but to trim down your nicotine intent -- content by switching from tobacco products to vaping, I think is just a tremendous innovation. And this diverse group, which is being picked on somewhat, has the tools to get away from cigar and cigarette smoking that I did not have. I think you're just going to force them to go online, black market, or drive to Los Osos or Cayucus, because I don't feel the county would be banning any of these products anytime soon. So, you would just be throwing businesses out of our community to go to Los Osos, Cayucus. You know, I think it's unfair scenario here, and we're a nation of accepting a lot of different people, and I think we ought to accept the fact that people make choices. People are smarter than we give them credit for, and they're smart enough to use vaping products as a tool to quit smoking tobacco. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up for public comment is Ann O'Brien, I believe. She spoke -- oh, she was -- yeah, she came during radio. Okay. August was here. All right. Sam Creedy. Sam, welcome.
Good evening, Council and staff. My name's Sam Creedy. I'm a Los Osos resident. I have two tobacco retailer in Morro Bay. Two out of the 16 retailers that are going to be suffering out of the ban on this tobacco and vape product, the loss of revenues would reach over $1 million just on those banned products. I'm not talking about all the tobacco sales. The sales of only the banned products is over $1 million annually in the city of Morro Bay. And along with that will go many other items that are sold with those tobacco items at those shops and businesses. Like I mentioned before, when we lose a sale of an item, we lose a sale of other things that goes with it, like a newspaper, or a coffee, or a beer, or something else. So, it's not just that number, the $1 million loss. I think the staff and the council need to make more education and more informed decision on the tobacco and all the different tobacco products that are there and are being banned. We have cigarettes. We have electronic cigarettes. We have vaping products. We have chewing tobacco. We have spitless chewing tobacco. We have electronic cigarettes that are just plain tobacco. They have no flavor, just like smoking regular cigarette, and they come in different levels of nicotine, from zero to whatever you want. So, a lot of people use those to quit smoking. So, they were good in many ways to many people. And just to mention that not all tobacco products target minors. Not everything that's in the ban is directed to minors. I mean, chewing tobacco is not directed to minors, and menthol cigarettes have been around for many, many years, and they've never been an issue for underage smoking. And that's a great loss for businesses. The ban, this ban will probably make Morro Bay look good on paper for the American Lung Associations, will probably get a grade A or lower. I'm not sure, but in reality, it's not going to change anything. It's not going to improve the health of residents in Morro Bay. The product is available everywhere, down the road, online, maybe black market will be created, and so, nothing will change, I don't think so. I think that's all I have to say, and I just hope you guys look at those 16 different businesses that work and hard in Morro Bay to survive and support their families and employ many, many people in this city of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next up for public comment is George Creedy. George, welcome.
Good evening, Councilmen. My name is George Creedy. I'm one of the 16 retailers in city of Morro Bay. I've been retailer for 12 years right now, and I just want to let you guys know, it's a hard business. It's tough. It's my life savings. My business alone supports four families, and regardless this ban of tobacco product and vaping, I don't think it makes much difference just because it just -- my, at least my customers, I mean, we're talking about 20 to 25 to 30-year-old people that come in and buy products, and they're really aware about the dangers of it, and they just, they choose to do it. It's unfair for us to, for the councilmen, to tell them not to, you can't do it. That strategy never worked. It will never do. Regardless of kids, I got many kids coming into my store, and honestly, they don't even -- they don't even try. They don't even, they don't even care about the vaping. They get it online. Like I said, they get it online. They can get it through anybody else, not regardless of my business. And I think it would really, really hurt my business on that, on that matter of tourism too. Tourists don't understand the ban either. They come in, they're going to bring their stuff with them, we're going to lose all kinds of revenues. It's going to really hurt. I mean, I got a small store, and... a small store, and it will be an impact to me. And I want to speak to you about my customers. I've been asking people for the last three, four months, you know, what do they think? What's going on with them? I want to give them a voice. They're not, they're not, they don't agree with this, and not just because, don't take it from me, from the retailer. I do talk to them all the time. I'm their friends. We bond, we, they tell me about their things, and they're not, they're not really happy with this. They want them to stop. If you guys, they feel like they're being picked on, and it's not fair. It's not fair for them. It's not fair for me. It's not fair for the, for the other retailers. So I ask you please to consider this ban a little bit more, do some more research. I don't have any fancy medical records. I don't have any data, computer data. I just talk to people face-to-face, and I'm just trying to get their voice to you guys and to consider this a little better. And that's all. Thank you for your time, guys, and hopefully you guys reconsider, and it won't hurt the businesses, and it will respect their willingness of people. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Next up for public comment is Jessica Rivas. Jessica, welcome.
Good evening, city council members in the Morro Bay community. My name's Jessica Rivas, and I currently work for Morro Bay Market Spirits and also the neighboring Business Tobacco Plus. I stand before you asking if you take more time to really sit and research the ban's effect on the 16 businesses, if I counted correctly here in Morro Bay, not to mention the two upcoming dispensaries who might potentially be selling THC and CBD vaping products. I understand your concerns with the youth vaping epidemic. There have been many times teenagers come into the smoke shop trying to buy products. The second they walk into the shop, I politely demand IDs, and I'm usually met with laughing, snarky comments, being ignored, or them trying to pay, pass really well fake IDs. I can't tell you how many times I've denied service to parents who've yelled out to their kids in the car, asking what flavor or what vape product they want, or the latest Morro Bay High School student who came in trying to purchase, who had no idea I knew his older sister, I knew how old he was. We try our very best at the shops to be on top of everyone that comes in and purchases. The call of this ban has been a huge slap in the face to small business owners. I'm not convinced the ban will be as effective as you think, considering these kids travel to other cities to buy these, or they can get any of these products online without IDs. Don't punish small business for teenagers abusing vaping products. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And next up for public comment is Ben Akari. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and Merry Christmas. Well, I'm business owner. I'm one of the 16 businesses. I opened my shop 10 years ago, five months, and one day from now. It's been great 10 years. Been making a living. I have a family. I have four years old, and that's my way of making a living. Morro Bay's expensive town. I pay high rent, $200 on water, which a lot of you realize that. It's been very expensive to live here, and it's been hard to do business, and you guys making it harder and harder and harder. Selling tobacco, it's not illegal. Selling flavored tobacco is not illegal. It's been around forever. I have an 82-years-old customers. She went crazy when I told her she has to drive to Los Osos to get her cigarette. She's 82, she's healthy. She's, but she refused to drive 15 miles to Los Osos every day to get her cigarette, and she want to buy one bag cigarette a day. She don't want to buy two. She don't want to buy a carton, because she will smoke more. She decided to buy one bag cigarette a day. So banning flavored tobacco, menthol, I think is a bad thing. Will be very hard on my business. I got right here the CDC report. That's from Friday, December 6th. That's a recent report. What they say basically right here, all the problem, all the death, all the sickness, it's from THC product. They've been getting from black market, online. They recommend also, and this, and you guys will be welcome to look at it, that's the CDC, which is Center of Disease Control. Those are people who do the work for the FDA. They recommend for people to not buy vape product with THC. They recommend not to buy it from unknown sources, which online. So what we doing, it's exactly the opposite. We stopping legal business from selling the product, and we're going to let people look for other sources, which, you know, online, and no one knows where that stuff coming from. It's going to be black market in this city. People will take advantage in this. They will make vape juice in their garage. No one knows what's inside that vape juice. God knows. And those guys, they don't care. 18-years-old, 17-years-old, walk to them doors and ask them to buy vape, they will sell it. I stop people in the door. No one allowed to walk my, to my shop if they not 21. They have to be 21 and older to walk to my shop. I have nothing to sell them if they not 21. And I think we're doing the right thing. I think you guys should think about it, and it will be very bad for me if you ban the sale of vape and flavored tobacco in Morro Bay only. I think you guys just wait for the county, see what the county want to do, the state want to do, then we could talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public comment is Joel Anderson. Joel, welcome.
Good evening, city council staff, everybody, the community. I'm Joel Anderson. I manage the mobile station of the hill, and I think I could be safely, safe to say that most store owners, managers that I know of, are in solidarity with the city to not let tobacco products get in the hands of minors. We don't want that. We have families. That's a part of something that we could all agree with. We, 17 years I've worked at the station, we had one boo-boo about seven years ago, and since then, we've got some new technology to stop and ID all products to ID, you know, we have 35-year or older is where we start IDing. But the ban on the flavored tobacco products, this would include the winter greens, which are favored by, actually, the African-American demographic. Smokeless products are favored by blue collar demographics, and the fruity flavors are actually favored by a lot of CMC employees. So I would say 43% of our market is smokeless tobacco, and that's where most of these flavored tobacco products lie, and as well as the nicotine-flavored packets that don't contain tobacco. A lot of these smokeless products are used by customers. I hear them say this all the time. I quit smoking and started using the smokeless tobacco products. The new ones, they're called a Zen, I think, is actually just a nicotine product, but they're all flavored. Our policy in our store is we ID 100% for all alcohol sales. We, that's enforced with a, in company organization that tests us. We police ourselves on this, and if employee does not ID properly, scan the ID or enter the date of birth, they'll get in trouble for that. They'll get, you know, they get a write, written up for that. It's, well, all I want to say, if the council would not ban the flavored tobacco products, I think we would voluntarily ID 100% for all tobacco products. We don't want minors to get a hold of these things, but the impact on our sales would be as such that, I have a brand-new assistant manager, he's a family man, two-year-old little girl, his hours would be affected, and I have nine other employees whose hours would be affected by the loss of revenue, and that's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Next up for public comment is Mimi Goldberg. Welcome back, Mimi.
Hi, good evening, city council and everybody else that's here and people out there. My name's Mimi Goldberg, and Happy Hanukkah to the city of Morro Bay. In an upbeat note, the tree lighting was great, and I'm happy to announce that the new branch in the bay are thriving. Regarding the vaping, I really liked that young gentleman that spoke. He was 13-years-old, and he went to Los Osos Middle School, and he spoke so wisely. He said, like, regarding the Declaration of Independence, the pursuit of life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. If vaping makes people happy, don't take away their right to be happy. And he said, have another, have a non-vaping zone for the people that don't want to vape. He was so cool, that kid. I wish he was here right now, but he's not. Morro Bay, it brings so many taxes, dollars into Morro Bay, and you guys are so concerned about getting money into Morro Bay. And by exaying that, their stores rock. They are awesome. And who wants to give Los Osos our money? We don't. I don't. And so, please keep that into consideration, okay? It's, your taxes are really phenomenal, like, phenomenal, whatever. Phenomenal, correct. Yeah. They pay, actually, those stores pay higher taxes than other stores. So you can do your research on that, but, coolly guys, good night.
Thank you, Mimi. Public comment for consent agenda is still open. Any other members wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Hello. I'd just like to say that I think there must be a lot of money being made off vape sales. And secondly, I'm not against anybody, you know, doing what they want to do, being, you know, exercising their constitutional freedoms, except when ultimately what they're doing costs me. And if you're using a product that does not promote good health, what does it promote? And ultimately, if you get sick, either my insurance costs are going to go up, or somehow the government is going to have to pay your healthcare bill if you're unable to. So ultimately, that ends up costing me. So I don't want to pay for somebody's bad choice.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for consent agenda items. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Michelle Craig, and I'm assistant manager at Shell. I just want to comment on, so first on the menthol part and the flavors, a lot of that stuff took place way before vaping ever existed. We didn't have the kind of problems that we have today. Like, I'm okay with the vaping thing, but to include cigars, menthol cigarettes, things that we've done for decades, to me is a little crazy. And it would impact 35% to 40% of our in-store sales, which would cut our employees in half, and possibly put some of us under. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for items on the consent agenda. And welcome.
My name's Jim Cornet. Hello, council and mayor and city, or city staff. I'm just kind of confused about the, how this thing was put together, the number 267. It just seems like there's a couple hodgepodge thing, you know, portions of it. I'm not a supporter of vaping by any means. I quit smoking when I was in college, woke up one day and said, that's it. I was smoking a pack and a half a day. I didn't need to, you know, that was a long time ago. They didn't have vape, vape products then. I just stopped. So, but the question I have is, you're putting a restriction on pharmacies and saying that they can't sell tobacco products. Now, I don't understand why pharmacy couldn't sell it. There's a statement that it's tested approval of purchase and use of tobacco. However, pharmacies sell, or let's say Rite Aid, for instance, sells a variety of things. They sell alcohol. Now, what, how many people die because of alcohol? Alcoholism, cirrhosis of the liver. So if they're going in to get their prescriptions, at the same time, they can go over and buy a bottle of Jack Daniels and go home and drink it. So I just don't think that's particular store, and I'm not affiliated with them, but it just struck me as like a, you know, it was saying no to the pharmacy, but okay for a gas station, okay for grocery store. Second thing is, as I'm reading these things for the upcoming marijuana dispensaries, it says the vaping products are excluded for dispensaries. It's okay for them to sell vaping things? Is that, I don't know how I get a question answered.
This is a public comment, so this is not back and forth.
Okay, but that's the last thing I'm going to ask you. But any case, so if you're going to allow dispensaries to sell vaping products, it seems like that is not consistent with banning other vaping things in the city. As I was sitting there, I went on my smartphone, and I looked online, and you can buy marijuana at 18-years of age, so you could get a vaping product at 18. You can't buy a vaping product anywhere in the state of California unless you're 21. And the last thing is, if you watch kids vaping, the smoke comes right out of their mouth, but if people are smoking marijuana, they're going to hold it in their lungs as long as possible. So I just don't think it's going to solve a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Please keep no comments in the public. Thank you. Public comment's still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Kevin Hanson. I'm just a customer of pretty much all the stories that are here. They all know me. And I came in, I think that the logic of the matter isn't that any of them are advocating for tobacco, or that smoking is great in any way, shape, or form. They're concerned about their businesses and their revenue. And as I've gone to all of them, I've gotten to see their families. I see that they're serious business people. I know some of them are building towards a better life. They don't want to be selling bubble gum, alcohol, and tobacco. They would like to get some money to start another business, something they care more about. And I think that all, you know, most of their points are pretty relevant, that all this revenue is just going to go to surrounding areas, and until you nip the problem of tobacco, and I do smoke, you know, and if this was an issue of getting rid of tobacco altogether, I might be on a different side. But as far as I'm looking at it, and I understand that by putting this ban, all you're going to be doing is hurting local business. It's not really, as they've said, going to help the health matters, help them in their business and their pursuits, and it's certainly not going to get people to stop smoking. So if we just consider it in that light, and consider the businesses and the people that we have in our community who do watch the children and, you know, people are trying to get in without the right to buy tobacco, you know, I've been in bigger cities. I grew up in the Bay Area where people don't care, but all these businesses, business owners, I've seen care and pay a lot of attention. And so I just don't want to see them punished. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please, no comments from the audience. Thanks. Public comment is still open for items on the consent agenda. Waiting. Are you coming for public comment? Okay. It's about to close it. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Elia Curry. I'm a business owner in Alscadero. The thing is, I believe we are in freedom country. I think, like, everyone can make their decision. I need to make my decision. I need not anyone to make their decision for me. First thing, the problem is the THC products from the street, from the black markets. That's the problem. My question is, can any one of you guys names, any shop get closed in USA and approve it? See, sold any products of this to any, to any kids and get died? No, for sure. That's, that's the answer. Second thing, the problem is the black market and online. That's the only thing you can, we can fight. We pay tax, they're didn't pay tax. Online, anyone can go online and order whatever they want. Third thing, why, if you, if you ban flavors, why we don't ban a food flavors too? It's the same flavor. It's coming in Gullens, the same flavor exactly. McDonald's. McDonald's, KFC, whatever, Burger Kings, it's flavor, flavor. So online, you can buy separate flavor and nicotine flavor, and you can mix them together and you can make your own if you want to. So we didn't make any sense now. The thing is you do, we all had kids. I do have kids too, and I scare about them, and I like to protect my kids. But the thing is, you just make it worse, because you basically, you go, you're going to shut our business down. We're going to close, we're going to lose about 45% from our sales. That's, that's mean, we're going to, we not afford to keep open to pay our employees and to pay the tax and to keep paying rent and bills. And we all know that the rent in Morro Bay is high and the bills is high too. We, my family is on the business in Morro Bay. For over 20 years, we paying tax for this city. So we have decoy every single day, people under the age trying to get some products from us, and we ideas them all, and we keep best for 20, over 20 years. How come we being best and we ideas them? If we get three tickets, we all know, we're going to shut the business. They're going to close it for us. We can't allow to sell any products anymore. So for 25 years, we keep idea and we keep best. And how about, can you tell me, if we close our shop, who of you going to go to all these four employees we have and tell them, "Sorry, guys, you fired, you don't have job anymore. You're going to lose your job." One of them has kids for two years old. She feed them and she work, she feed her and she worked for us for over five years. So also, I, I smell kuka for, since 2000, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. You bet. Public comment's still open for consent agenda items. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to council. Obviously, I think a number of us will want to pull A9, so I'll just go ahead and start. I'll pull A9, which is the ordinance regarding tobacco and secondhand smoke. Any other items to pull?
A6.
Any others? Okay, I'll take, entertain a motion for approval of A1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Not. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And Councilmember Heller, A6, please, sir.
I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we should do A9 first perhaps, since there's so many people here interested in that, or just a thought?
No, just going to go in order. That's.
Okay, I guess these questions are for Mr. Leivik. Okay, so, in looking at the report provided by Corolo for the WRF project, it looks like the information is through the end of October, but because of the, just one council meeting in November, we, we're not seeing it until now. So is that, is that correct?
That's correct, and we're going to play a little bit of catch-up.
Okay. Understood. Understood. And a lot has happened in the last six weeks or so relative to the project that probably are not reflected in the report, but I just wanted to go through and present some of the questions that I have. So, the city website states that the 90% WRF design documents are expected to be complete in November of 2019. Have those been received?
Not as of yet.
So if, so for the WRF, you have the 60% design documents, but as I understand, it's plans only, no specifications? Is that correct?
That's correct. They're working on the specs and will, being a design build, it will be released in component pieces, so the, you know, the first will be a grading component. We'll have complete plans for that, and then we'll move on to the more process-oriented pieces of the project.
Okay, but you're still going to get specifications?
Yes.
From the design team for each deliverable?
We'll review the specs. It's a little bit different than a design bid-build. We're not issuing a specification, the design builder is, to their suppliers and subcontractors.
So another note on the website is the final grading package for the South Bay Boulevard site was completed in the fall of 19. Is that, is that true? I mean, the documents that I saw were like a 60% grading package, civil drawings?
They are not 100% complete. I've not approved a, I've not signed a authorization for construction on a grading plan.
Okay.
We're waiting for a final stormwater plan.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you can update the website. So who's going to actually review the civil package and issue the grading permit?
There is no grading permit. That's, would be a building permit. It would be issued under my authority as the city engineer to issue that authorization to construct the grading portion of the project, once we're satisfied that the grading package is complete.
So the county is okay with that? I mean, it looks like we're moving forward to buy the land from the county, that will remain in the county. They are not interested in reviewing those drawings and issuing the permit themselves?
No, they are not interested, and there's, there's been a discussion between county council and our legal council regarding the aspects of what the requires, the legal requirements to are issuing a building permit, and the city does not require a building permit to be issued by the county to construct, nor does it for a project of this nature require building permit from our own organization, the city, to construct that, this public works project.
Okay. There was another note, let's see, on the PowerPoint, PowerPoint slide number one, it says, "The purchase agreement allows start of construction before the close of escrow." So how does that work in terms of possible liability for the city to proceed with construction work on property they don't own? Or is that a question for our city attorney or Mr. Leivik?
Well, we're taking, we're near close of escrow, and likely, we will not start construction before we own the property due to issues with, that were discussed earlier in public comment with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and California Red Legged Frog, that I briefly summarized in the cover memo to the report.
Okay. And then also on PowerPoint slide one, it says, "The final WIFI loan agreement will come back to the council for review and approval in January 2010." Is that on schedule?
Yes.
PowerPoint two notes that there's a coastal commission conditions, there are three conditions that have to be met before the fully executed CDP will be issued. Have all three of those been?
Yes, the coastal commission issued a CDP, they're issuing it in phases. They issued the CDP for construction of the WRF site itself and to continue with the geotechnical investigations for the groundwater injection. So we have a CDP that we've, the cover letter's up on the WRF website. The full plans are available for review in the public works office.
Okay. The recycled water facilities. As I understand it, reading, reading this report, there are some issues with easements, and I'm wondering if you have a long-term problem with getting easements for the pipeline route that's currently designed? Do you have a Plan B in mind, or what are your thoughts about, about that?
Well, cities always have a Plan B for acquiring property. Government agencies do. We have the, the process of eminent domain or on condemnation of the property.
Okay. And do you know, it looks like the hydrogeological work has been delayed, possibly because of access to property and so forth. Do you have any idea when we will know the true capacity of the groundwater basin, where we're planning to eject, I think up to 800,000 gallons a day of treated wastewater?
Yes, once we confirm the model, so we need to get on the property. It's a separate issue from the acquiring of the easements. They, in concept, have agreed to us doing the geotechnical investigation. We're just complying with their requirements, Vistra's requirements to do so. So we needed a, the CDP issued for that, and then they have some additional requirements. The property owner, owner is, of the well is not Vistra, not PG&E, it's both of them together as Morro Bay Mutual Water Company, and they're having a board meeting to discuss that.
Okay, so I guess the question for me is, and that's kind of a gray area for me, the whole recycled piece, and, and the big question mark that I've had for, for many months now is, what is the true capacity? I know you've done modeling, but when, do you think we're two months, three months, six months, a year away from knowing what the true capacity of that basin is going to be?
I would say closer to two to six months.
Okay.
Once we have access and can confirm the, the injection and pumping capacity.
I noted on, in table two, I'm not sure which, which slide it is, but project accomplishments and challenges under the critical challenges column. I see a note that as design is continued, additional proposed change orders have been identified that are being evaluated by the city. So are there more proposed change orders coming to the council soon? What might they be for? Are these zero cost change orders, credit change orders, additive change orders? What are, what are we looking at here?
There's a mix of those. There's some negative change orders, some cost change orders, some zero cost change orders. Those are not completed, the design builder has not priced, completely priced all those changes, so we're working on the details of what should be priced, what shouldn't be priced. Some of them are changes that we have requested, and we are negotiating the provisions in the contract for escalation and delay that will be part of that change.
Okay, and are you still trying to maintain a guaranteed maximum price? I mean, we started with what I thought was guaranteed maximum price. Construction has not started. $1.9 million in change orders has already been approved by the city. Are we still looking at guaranteed maximum price? I mean, how do you look at these added costs that keep coming when I thought, at least for the WRF, we have a guaranteed maximum price for it to get built?
It's a guaranteed maximum price for the product that we originally asked for. If we ask for any changes or any changes are required, if the city is contractually obligated to pay for those, that increases the guaranteed maximum price, unless we choose not to do those changes.
So who's requiring these changes?
Some of them, the city has requested. Some of them have been through design development. Those are ones we're pushing back on, the design builder, but there have been some changes that the, the city has requested for operational purposes.
So I'm kind of old school. I mean, guaranteed maximum price to me means guaranteed maximum price. That's the environment I've worked in for many years, and that means this is what we want. You said you'll deliver for this price. Unless the owner comes forward with and initiates change orders, that guaranteed maximum price is not exceeded, or a public agency in the codes change, that price is not exceeded. Do any of the PCOs, the proposed change orders that are coming forward, fit into that category? Owner-initiated?
They fit into owner-initiated, and due to, for example, the mitigation measures for, that we'll have to comply for the California Red Legged Frog, will likely exceed the environmental allowance that we have on the project. So that will be a change order caused by a governmental agency.
Okay. On PowerPoint slide 15, project milestones, award of contract for construction of conveyance facilities. Now, the compliance date previously was the end of November of this year. The new date, for whatever reason, is now eight months later. I'm extremely uncomfortable that we're talking about breaking ground on a $69 million facility, and we don't really know the cost of connecting that with our existing facility, it was the cost of the piping. Why is this seven months behind?
Delays with getting on the property and finalizing the surveying, geotechnical work that needs to be done to finalize that design.
If we want to stay within our 126 or 125 million dollar budget, do you think it's wise to proceed starting the construction on a building when you don't know what the cost is to connect it to our existing plant?
I think any more delays on the start of construction with the WRF will cost the city more money due to escalation and delay costs that are provisions in the contract.
Even though you have a year or more between your deadline date set by the Water Quality Control Board and what you're, when you think you'll complete the project now?
Yes, the contract allowed for a delay of up to one year after award for notice to proceed, and we have now passed that one-year timeframe.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. I would like to say for the record, I do think it's a mistake on the part of the city to start construction of the project.
Yeah, thank you.
Without knowing the full cost of the conveyance pipeline facilities.
Let me remind, let me remind all of the council members, you have access to any department head regarding questions on agenda items that you'd like to ask questions for. Feel free to make an appointment with any department head regarding any issue and perhaps vet those prior to the meeting and expose those that you want to expose, otherwise it really prolongs the time. So with that, I will go ahead and move approval of A6.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Then moves this to A9. I think a number of us would want to pull that, given the information that we received tonight. I, via ex parte, met with approximately five tobacco retailers a little over a week ago to address many of the concerns that were aired this evening. The result of that discussion significantly surrounded economic impacts to their businesses and concerns about viability. One of the things I learned is that menthol cigarettes, and I think I'm correct in stating this, were a big percentage of the sales that a majority of the retailers were concerned about. None indicated that they had had any infractions prior and/or issues associated with the agencies that visit them and do compliance checks. And there were further concerns about flavored tobacco that was non-smokable, specifically, and I'm sorry, I don't know all the products, I'm a non-user, but I think it has to do with chew and the pouch tobacco and products like Skoll, if you will. Guys are laughing at me because I'm not really sure what I'm saying, right? But, but that that was a big percentage of the business and would have significant impact. For me, I'll just state upfront, the number one priority of a city and city council is to protect public health and safety, and it is from that perspective that I remain very much in favor of passing this ordinance. However, I am also concerned about the economic impact, not only to our retailers and, and their employees, but also the income to the city, which has not been quantified via sales tax, but perhaps if you extrapolate, would be something considered to be mild to moderate in terms of an impact. I would personally feel comfortable removing the, the menthol cigarette prohibition and exclusion of, gosh, I'm not sure if I'm going to get all these products right, but the chews, the pouches, and those kinds of tobacco. I guess, is it smokeless tobacco? Would that be the appropriate broad category? Flavored, smokeless tobacco products from the ordinance? However, I feel compelled to support the remainder of the ordinance, and I'll just open it up for, for other comments. That's why I pulled A9. And thank you, those of you that were here tonight, that did meet with me prior and that came and spoke about this issue. Councilmember Davis?
Sure.
Sure, thanks. I too had an ex parte meeting with four of our local tobacco retailers who educated me on both their operation and the impact on their businesses. And also, I have been mulling over the comments that Councilmember McPherson made at our previous meeting. And so, I do have a concern about banning the sale of a legal product, which is tobacco. And I have concerns about the impact of that ban on local businesses, their families, and their employees, and particularly when Moro Bay's new motto is, "We're Open for Business." So I'm okay with flavored tobaccos. I'm okay with permitting the sale of cigars. I still have concerns about vaping. The problem seems to be, though, with vaping has to do with THC, vitamin E, and black-market products. And as Councilmember McPherson said, if a product is legal and is regulated, should we prohibit the sale of it? My concern, as the mayor said, is public health and safety, and it particularly harmed to the young people of our community. The retailers I spoke to were in favor of requiring a 100% ID check on all customers who come into their shops, and I would like to see that incorporated into the ordinance. I don't know how to regulate vaping to keep it away from young people, so I'm just going to stop talking at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
I was just wondering if our city attorney could clarify a couple of things. Are these ex parte communications or are these just meetings with the community? For instance, I met with the community as well, with some business owners. Could you just clarify that piece real quick first?
For an item like this, there's no legal requirement to disclose ex parte communications. That derives from when there's a public hearing or the council is acting in essentially a judicial capacity. If a council member hears essentially evidence for their judicial role outside of the meeting, then there's a duty to bring what they heard and who they talked to to the meeting, so there can be rebuttal of that, and other council members can hear what that quote-unquote "evidence" is. For a matter like this, because it's not a public hearing where, for example, there's a conditional use permit being appealed, something like that, there's no legal requirement to disclose who has been talked to outside of the meeting.
Thank you. And then I think we just heard some comments about flavored tobacco being legal. I'm not sure that that's accurate, other than for menthol. I think the flavored tobaccos were outlawed in 2009. Do you know anything about that?
I believe the federal government restricts cigarettes that have flavors in them other than menthol, but my understanding is that there's a lot of tobacco products that are essentially used by not lighting the tobacco leaf. Rather, it's, you know, chews, dips, other ways of ingesting essentially the nicotine through the tobacco into the system.
Okay, well, I'm inclined to, I think I was a very strong voice on this at the beginning and felt that we need to get this going and get this going quickly, primarily because of my concern for the health of people in our community, both children and adults in our community, and because of the amount of money that the tobacco industry spends and the vaping industry spends to keep these products legal. It's a clear sign to me that we're up against some pretty big battles for the health of our community. That said, I did meet with a couple of business owners, and I felt that the arguments were compelling in terms of what they need to keep their business going, specifically as related to the sale of menthol products, which there is conflicting evidence around. If you look at tobacco-free kids, there are a number of communities that have outlawed the sale of menthol. Moro Bay is actually not on the forefront of this issue. We're sort of in the middle of the pack when it comes to this issue. So, I think that we can strike a balance here between going out and getting in front of the vaping issue. I would agree with the mayor around keeping vaping and keeping the rest of the ordinance in play and drawing back on the menthol piece. I do not want to draw back on all flavored tobaccos or other products, the sale of single cigar products, but I could see some movement on the menthol issue.
Thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah, well, I appreciate everybody who came out, and I do want to say I didn't encourage any of those folks to come out, but I felt that we had moved really too quickly on this issue before we understood it fully, and everything that I have heard tonight just confirms that for me, that we don't understand what all the products are and we don't understand what the implications are for doing something that is really a drastic step and that not a lot of communities have undertaken, only one or two in the state of California. And I would point out again that, and the arguments have been ones that I have made, this is a legal product and the sales will continue, so we are not really addressing the problem. And I think we even need to really clearly identify what the problem is. And if the problem is really trying to keep these products out of the hands of kids, then let's focus on that. Let's find out where they're getting them. Let's really try to do something about that issue. Let's educate. Let's maybe beef up enforcement if that's necessary, but let's not ban the sale to illegal adults who have the choice to make about whether or not they wish to buy these products. And I just want to remind you, at the last time we discussed this issue, I read an editorial from the New York Times, and they basically said that banning the sale of vaping products will do more harm than good for some of the reasons that have been stated today, and that is that it just encourages more black-market sales, which is exactly where people are getting sick and dying. So, to me, we really need to, I would take Erica's suggestion, and especially given that we have talked about various products that we don't even understand, and really give better direction to our city attorney to come back with a different ordinance. So that would be my position on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller?
Well, I was pretty aggressive about this when it first came up too, and I agree with Councilmember Addis's comments regarding our need to take care of public health. Obviously, there are a lot of reasons not to enforce this ban, but there, smoking and use of nicotine products is the leading cause of preventable death in this country, far exceeding the number of people that die in car accidents and a number of other things. And the cost to us and our healthcare system is in the billions of dollars. So I think the public health perspective is an important one to remember. I appreciate everyone who came out, who is involved in the businesses here. Obviously, it's going to have a significant impact. I personally feel like I do need more education so that I fully understand the different products, but after I have that education, I do want to move forward with an aggressive policy, but I think we need to pull this back as written, and I personally need to educate myself a little bit better and talk about perhaps extending the enforcement date or whatever we come back with, but I think it's very important that this city take a stand and, on this, on this issue.
Okay, so we're, we've got a number of different things going on here. This is the second reading of the ordinance, and we don't have complete consensus across the board. Councilmember McPherson was the nay vote on the first reading, not exposing you, but just taking your comments into consideration. I appreciate that. The remainder were ayes for this. I, I'm going to ask the city attorney regarding the issues that have been raised with the removal of potentially the menthol product sales being banned for both cigarettes and for other non-smokable tobacco. If we removed that, then would this have to come back again as a second reading with an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Any changes to the ordinance that was introduced at first reading would need to come back for a second reading, because tonight would then be its first reading or introduction because we changed it.
And then I do agree with Councilmember Heller's comment about extending the date, perhaps, on retail sales banning because of the impact on our retailers and their inventory. So possibly extending the date, I think it's now March if I remember correctly?
March 15th.
March 15th, perhaps to, by a couple of months, two months, might be an option. I'm just thinking out loud right now about opportunities, and I'm looking at the remainder of the comments. Councilmember Davis generally has a concern about banning legal products. He's okay with flavored tobacco and cigars, and, I'll let you restate that. I think I, if I put a note here, 100%, oh, 100% identification required for all retailers, anybody that buys a vaping product.
Yes, and I, I don't know what to do about vaping. If vaping is legal and regulated, then adult choice?
It is not. It is not regulated. That's, that's the reason for the ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll try this, and if it fails, then we'll, we'll maybe send it back and come back. I'm going to move that we amend ordinance number 627 concerning tobacco, vaping, and a second-hand smoke, including through a tobacco retailer licensing program, prohibition on the sale of e-cigarettes, vaping products, and enhancing the city's current second-hand smoking regulations by a smoke-free policy for multi-unit housing, to delete flavored menthol cigarettes, delete flavored, non-smokable, menthol-flavored, non, help me, smokable products, and, and extend the date from March to May, March 15th to May, to allow retailers to reduce product, and I'll try that.
I'll second.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Addis, and I'll open it up for.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, to clarify, a way to make a change, so we could possibly do a first reading tonight. If you look on page 74, 448, for ordinance number 627, page 5 of 20 of the ordinance, if we simply eliminated C up at the top, flavored tobacco products, that'd be a simple way to just take out the prohibition on flavored tobacco products. Now, that would be broader than menthol. That would definitely include the smokeless. If we were to try to, tonight on the floor, craft a change to the definition, however, of flavored tobacco products, I'm not sure if we'd be able to distinguish between smokable and smokeless.
So, thank you, and I will amend my motion and see if there's an amendment to the second. I'll amend my motion to remove item C of the proposed ordinance, page 5 of 20, or staff page 74, and then change the, is it okay to consider changing the date?
Yes.
Yeah, then extend the date from March to May, an additional two months for implementation, as stated previously.
I'll second.
Okay, so we do have a, first by Mayor Heading and a second by Councilmember Addis, and I'll open it up again.
Can we add 100% ID check of all customers?
And I would, as another friendly amendment, then I would also add a requirement for 100% ID check of all, Councilmember Davis, of all tobacco customers.
To actually craft the legal wording for that, I think would require more than just on the floor right now, adding that into the ordinance. Now, we could do a first reading tonight and then potentially bring that back when we have the scheduled discussion on retailer locations, because that's already been asked to be brought back by council, so if that pleases the council, that's one way of dealing with that.
Okay, so the motion would stand then, as stated, seconded by Councilmember Davis and, excuse me, Addis, and any other discussion? Councilmember Heller?
Possible friendly amendment, I'd like to consider extending the date to, implementation date to July 1st, 2020.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, I'm fine with that, so I would, I'll restate my motion. I'll withdraw the original motion, and I'll restate, and then see if there's a second. I would move approval of the existing ordinance with the removal of, I lost my page number, on page 5, with flavored tobacco, and extend the date from March 15th to July 15th, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's a motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion?
Yes, I said July 1st, but I'm fine with the 15th.
Yeah, I think, I think it was March 15th?
Yeah.
Was that correct? I was just trying, is that okay?
Yeah.
March 15th, July 15th is what I stated. Further discussion?
I really think we're trying to craft something, an ordinance on the spot, without sufficient thought to what really needs to go into this ordinance, and so I'm disturbed that we're doing that. I would much rather that we just go back and, as I say, rethink what we really want to do here and, and the issue that we want to address before we take this action tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm going to agree with Councilmember McPherson and also ask, why do we still ban the, the single cigars if they, if they are as legal a product as flavored tobacco?
So the, I'm gonna, the comment is on the motion. If, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna call the question, and then if it fails, we can come back and have further discussion, or did you have another comment with regard to the motion?
I was just gonna respond to that, but I can wait, I can wait.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the question, hearing all comments.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Thank you. That finishes the consent agenda. That moves us, do we need a biofluid break? Yes, we do. Okay, so we'll take a two-and-a-half, three-minute biofluid break, and we will be right back. Thank you. Folks, thank you for that biofluid break. We are back. Item B1 is a public hearing. Just as a matter of process, we will hear the report from staff. Then we'll have council questions. At that time, when those are completed, I'll open the public hearing, take public comment after that, close public comment, and close the hearing, then move to council discussion and motion. So with that, item B1 is adoption of Resolution Number 103-19, a resolution of, for the abandonment vacation of portions of utility easements on 196 Penne Street, permit number ABN 19-001. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Leibig. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Staff does recommend that City Council adopt Resolution 103-19, a resolution that abandons portions of unused utility easements at 196 Penne Street in northern Morro Bay. The applicant has requested this abandonment based on conditions of their coastal development permit, and they've requested that the city abandon about 1,400 square feet of unused utility easements, which range in width from two-and-a-half feet to 10 feet, and that they, that are on the current property. The abandonment will allow the applicant to construct, in addition to their existing single-family home, and to construct a new accessory dwelling unit. The CDP for the accessory dwelling unit was approved by the Planning Commission on September 17th this year, and as part of those conditions of approval, as previously mentioned, was this requirement for abandonment. The respective utility companies, including the City of Morro Bay Utilities, have been contacted, and there's no utilities present within those easements or any plan for the future within those easements. The process for abandonment is set forth in, starting with Section 8300 of the California Streets and Highways Code, which contains the procedures under which a local agency like the City of Morro Bay can vacate, is the word in the code, or what's usually called abandon these right-of-ways and easements. The Planning Commission heard this item and found it to be consistent with the general plan. City Council, at your last meeting on November 12th, excuse me, at the meeting on November 12th, adopted Resolution 93-19, a resolution of intention to abandon these easements. This action was a notice pursuant to the California Streets and Highways Code, which included newspaper notification and posting of the site. In conclusion, this proposal can be found consistent with the California Streets and Highways Code and the city's general plan. This proposal is exempt from SEQA, and the required findings can be made for the abandonment by the City Council, and we recommend approval of Resolution Number 103-19, a resolution abandoning portions of these utility easements at 196 Penne. Thank you, and I'd happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leibig. Any questions from council? Seeing none here, none here. With that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and invite any members of the public who wish to speak on item B1. Please come forward now. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Leah McGee with MBS Land Surveys, and these utility easements were recorded in May of 1927. To my recollection, I don't recall any utilities ever being installed there. The landowners wish to build over the easements, and they must be abandoned, and this is the process to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. A public comment is still open on item B1. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, close the public hearing, and bring it back to council for discussion, and/or I will entertain a motion, if you are so inclined.
I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 103-19, a resolution abandoning or vacating portions of the existing utility easements at 196 Penne Street in Morro Bay.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson for the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Heller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That takes us to item C1, our first business item. This is discussion and adoption of resolutions, excuse me, resolutions approving City Council Policies and Procedures and Advisory Bodies Handbook and Bylaws, and consideration of vacation rental representation on the Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board and Discussion Direction Regarding Special Purpose Advisory Bodies. I will allow an introduction from either Ms. Swanson or our city manager, Ms. Collins.
I'll take that. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. On August 27th, the council appointed Mayor Heading and Councilmember McPherson as a subcommittee to review issues that had been identified as future agenda items at previous meetings, as well as other inconsistencies they may find during that review. The proposed policy revisions are provided as redline edits in the agenda packet, and it's my understanding the subcommittee will lead a point-by-point conversation about those proposed changes. In addition to that work that's being brought forward by the council's subcommittee, the council directed staff to bring back information on how to incorporate vacation rental representation into the T-Bid board. In the long term, staff recommends the composition of the board include five hoteliers, one vacation rental representative, and one community member-at-large. Currently, there are two community members-at-large seats with terms ending in January 2023. One alternative would be to temporarily appoint an eighth member that represents a permitted vacation rental property until January 2023, or when a community member-at-large seat becomes available, whichever occurs first. This proposed language is provided on page 385 of the agenda packet for council consideration. Lastly, staff requests the council consider and discuss the appropriate meeting frequency of its standing advisory bodies based on the associated workload. The current meeting frequency is listed on page 294 of the agenda packet and is generally defined in the advisory body bylaws. Any changes agreed to by the majority of the council could be incorporated into the amendments being considered tonight. And with that, I'll turn to the council's subcommittee to lead the discussion on the proposed changes. Following that discussion, staff recommends anything that's agreed upon be adopted by resolution, the adoption of Resolutions 10419 and 10519. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Very much appreciated and very comprehensive. So thank, I want to thank Councilmember McPherson for working with me, tolerating me in our review. She has the eagle eye and is excellent with details, and I appreciate that, whereas I hover at about 20,000 feet, so we make a good team on this. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity. I'm very briefly, because I'm hoping that you've had the opportunity to read this, going to give you what I think are the salient points regarding the council policies and procedures. Councilmember McPherson's going to do the same with the advisory bodies handbook and bylaws. You've heard of the recommendation with regard to the T-Bid, and then I'll make comments regarding special purpose advisory bodies, as well as Councilmember McPherson will discuss advisory body meeting frequency. So that's how we're going to divide it up. First, on page 292 of the staff report, the first item, Section 1.1.2, under Council Policies and Procedures, that is on page 309 of your packet. And what we did there was to change language. That allows the council, an approved strategic planning process, to set the city's annual goals, objectives, and action items in order to ensure that city staff has sufficient time and resources to accomplish these established priorities. We've suggested that adding future items to the work plan during the year is discouraged by advisory bodies. In other words, they should be aligned with goals already established. Exceptions would be warranted for unforeseen events, of course, that threaten health safety and a number of other things that are listed there. Should new items be recommended that are not part of the original plan, then the city manager, at his discretion, can request that an action item be removed to allow sufficient time to address the added item. In other words, if the work plan is already lengthy, it may need to be tailored and something else removed in order for staff to be able to complete it. With regard to item 3, page 325 on your agenda, let me get there. This one specifically addresses the issue of salaries for the mayor and council members. Originally, in our last advisory handbook, we had set a date of 2019 for CFAC to do this evaluation. Councilmember Addis had brought it up on an occasion. We discussed it and realized that they would not be able to complete it by 2019, so we've changed it to 2020. Then the items number four and five, first on page 331 of your packet. This is the issue regarding when the mayor has the opportunity to respond to requests for advocacy. In essence, it had limited it to the League of Cities. We added et cetera to that, realizing there may be other organizations that the city recognizes that are requesting action. Those specific organizations are not listed, but we've left it as an et cetera. And then we've added, at the discretion of the mayor, other written communications supporting previously agreed-upon policy issues by the council may be sent. In other words, I would not send anything that has not been previously discussed by the council and for which we have taken a position on. So adding, other than the League of Cities, there are a number of other agencies that do request letters, and then we've added, at the discretion of myself or the mayor, that communications that do have policy-related issues supported by the council can also be addressed by the mayor. And then on page 334 of your handbook, if I can get there now, Section 3.10, am I in the right place? Let's see, 334, yeah, there we go. Oh, page is backwards. There we go. Legislative action program, we added at the very bottom of that, "The council limits its official communication as a body of the whole in support of opposition to issues impacting the city specifically or local governments generally." In other words, legislative action, promotion and/or letter writing basically involves items or issues that are official communications of the body as a whole that support opposition to issues that would impact the city directly and/or other local governments in general, which most, everything that we consider does, but we're adding that language. And last was item number seven. This was, Barbara Spagnola caught, I think, an error. So very briefly, on Section 6.6.3, if you look at page 350 of your agenda, and I'll get there quickly, page 350, there is language on page 357 that needs to be added to this. It's just to keep it consistent. Dana, I can go over that with you. It doesn't change anything in this section. It's just an inconsistent application of something that was missed by us when we were looking at that. And so on page 351, we would be deleting 6.6.3.6.2 because it's a duplication, which is page 55 or page 351 of the agenda packet, and adding the language from page 357 to this section. And I can go over that with you. Folks, you'll see on page 357, when Councilmember McPherson comments, that this will all make sense to you. So with that, those were the changes to, the salient changes to policies and procedures. I can stop here and answer any questions before we move forward. Questions? Comments? Or comments? Sure.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, sure.
So much. I just think you've done this incredibly quickly. I just realized it was only a couple of months ago, and you've been hard at work since then. So I want to --
She's a taskmaster.
I want to appreciate that and agree with you that I feel very confident, knowing the level of detail and the level of sort of broad thinking that both of you bring to this, and that's mostly why I don't have very many questions, is because I trust the work that you've done.
Oh, thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
Do we want to basically say we agree with those then before we move on to the other handbook?
Should we piecemeal this in terms of approval, or?
If you'd like.
Or just move forward?
Just, why don't we move forward and try to do the whole thing? Yeah, go ahead. All right, thank you.
I'd be happy to do that. Okay, on, excuse me. On the advisory board handbook, the first discussion we have is on page 5 of the advisory board handbook, and this really has to do with the special purpose advisory boards that we create, which we have done recently. We have had two of them, and we just wanted to clarify that the bodies do not meet on a regular basis. That has been an issue that has been raised. They never were intended to. They meet for a limited duration and only when specific actions need to be taken in support of council, of the council decisions. So it's the council's process that directs when they're going to meet, and of course, we know that they need to be terminated also by the council, which we also added. Then there is some, this is consistent language, this, I believe, is the consistent language that we wanted to add, by the way, to the council procedures, which you will note. Okay, then we have page 9 of the handbook. Page 9. This concerns the work planning process, and a number of advisory boards have asked us to be very specific because we've done it in different ways, and what we've proposed is that we will ask each advisory board for input into the work plan as part of the goal and action item planning process, but once that plan is adopted, the advisory board will then be informed of what their work plan is, and if they want to add something to their work plan during the year, they have to first seek our approval because, again, it's the issue of staff time, and we need to make sure that the staff has the available time to add items. So also, if they want to change their time or anything related, since it's established by the council, they need to really ask council approval. Also, with respect to the creation of a subcommittee. Page 10, we have -- Page 10, we have, this is the process where the council now follows, where if we have questions of our staff, we send them to the staff member in advance, and that's just a courtesy, so that the staff member is prepared and has the answers to the question when we hold the meeting. And we're basically asking the advisory board members to follow that same procedure and make, ask the questions in advance and channel them through the advisory body's chairperson so that they can consolidate and make just one request to the staff person. And then we also clarified how the advisory board should communicate any formal recommendations to the council. And that was an issue that a number of them raised. They don't know how to get their recommendations in. And oftentimes, they just have a discussion. And what we would like to see is that if they want to make a specific recommendation to the council, they actually follow the same process that the council does, which is to make a motion, second it, discuss it, and vote on it. Otherwise, any discussion would be conveyed either in staff reports at successive council meetings. And once they make a formal recommendation, they could either email it or have the liaison bring it to the council. But that would make sure that we got it. Next is meeting absences. That's page 14. Okay, this is, again, this was a clarification, really. We were getting some requests for all meeting absences for advisory board members, and we recognize that we only want to see those that would exceed what we have suggested, which is if it's going to exceed 25% of the meetings in a given calendar year, then the council needs to see that request for an absence and approve it. So otherwise, it's up to the advisory board to handle absences. And then finally, there were a couple of things that were specifically requested by two of the advisory boards, and they happen to be the two that I am the liaison to. But both of them actually, in a formal, informal meetings, looked at these policies and wanted to make some specific changes. And so the one for the harbor advisory board, they asked that we include in their duties that they provide a channel of communication from individuals, businesses, and groups who live or have businesses on the harbor to the city council. And I felt that was something they do do, and so included that. And then the citizens' finance oversight committee, they actually edited their list of duties, which, again, it's, they clarified what they really do. So I, again, took their input and incorporated that. And then Barbara Spagnola also requested that the Measure Q report that they are required to submit to us should happen in the seventh month, not the sixth month, which is in their bylaws. So that's, that's what we did there.
And then, any questions on those, or not good questions? Okay, move forward. The vacation rental represented on T-Bid, I think Dana covered. I don't know if you have any questions for her with regard to that? No, seeing none? Okay. And then we looked at two special purpose advisory bodies. One was the GPAC. In talking with staff, the city currently has two limited-term special purpose advisory bodies. One is the GPAC and the WRFCAC. The GPAC was formed for the purpose of providing input and guidance throughout the general plan, local coastal plan update process. According to Mr. Graham, this work has been completed, and we're recommending that it be disbanded and that the members be formally thanked for their work. Looked back at the history of the WRFCAC committee, reviewed the original minutes way, way back with regard to the formation of this as an advisory committee and the language that was then codified in, I think, what you have as a resolution regarding WRFCAC. We reviewed their current functions and basically are recommending that the WRFCAC responsibilities be moved into the responsibility of the existing PWEB board and that the council consider, let's see, advising the, blah, blah, blah. The council subcommittee recommends council consider establishing an end date for WRFCAC due to the fact that a significant amount of the original council-directed work had been completed. The remaining duties and responsibilities could be accomplished by moving these responsibilities to PWEB, especially noting that all of the financial review occurs in CFAC. Additionally, because there are currently two PWEB vacancies, these could be filled by existing WRFCAC members for continuity of purposes. And so we're recommending the discontinuance of WRFCAC incorporation of the responsibilities for WRFCAC into PWEB, and that specifically two members, because there are vacancies, be considered to be added from the existing WRFCAC to that committee to achieve those duties and responsibilities. Happy to answer. Any questions? That-
Would the two people moved into PWEB be ordered to do that, or would they be volunteers?
So we, would they have, I believe that we would, we thought we would open it up according to the process that's established for advisory body appointment and go through the formal interview process of any existing members that might want to transition. I think we, there are at least two or three that may want to continue, but there may be one or two others that don't want to continue. And so we would open it up and then do our routine interview at January, whatever the date is, January, soon.
Yeah.
Next month. That was the process we were envisioning.
And I would just like to add that, at the time WRFCAC was created, I was the chair of the Public Works Advisory Board, and I was actually kind of hurt that they took that responsibility away from PWEB because I felt that it really belonged there. It's a public works project, and PWEB should have been the oversight or the advisory committee. But I was told that the main reason was that they wanted to have people, or at least one person on the WRFCAC that lived outside of Morro Bay, because at the time, we didn't have a site, and they were going through the site selection process. And so, and PWEB currently does receive an update on the project, so it's logical to me.
And then Councilmember McPherson will cover advisory body meeting frequency.
Right. Yeah. And this really came up when we started talking about how to expand public input in our processes. And so I know that Scott Collins looked at the various ways that we get input from citizens. And so I'd asked him at one point, how much time does it take a staff person to prepare for advisory board meetings? And so when I heard how much it was, it seemed concerning to me because it's a trade-off of what is the benefit, how many citizens participate in that way versus what are the costs of that form of participation? And in consulting with a couple of advisory boards, they felt they could get by with fewer than the 12 meetings a year. So that was the reason for saying we could cut back at least three meetings from each of the advisory boards. And as we know, Rec and Parks already only meets six times a year. So that's the basis for that recommendation, too. And the ones that are suggested have to do with when these various bodies actually make decisions. So there was a clear choice. And as you know, the council takes time off in November and, again, in December and in July. So it made more sense to say for some of them, they don't need to meet when the council's not meeting. So that's the rationale there.
Can I note that the recommended planning commission would continue as is, you know, multiple meetings, yes, because of the duties they perform or-
Correct.
Quasi, legislative, judicial.
Any questions? I'll just open it up. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Sure, absolutely.
First of all, you two, you've done an amazing job at sorting through this. I was reading all this. This is an amazing amount of work that Mayor Heading and Councilmember McPherson have put in to tune this whole thing up. And I hope you won't hold it against me, what I'm about to say here. But I'm just wondering, how much advice does the staff really want from the people who live here? I mean, I think it's really nice that we have these advisory committees, but it does take an enormous amount of your time. And I don't know that we really know any more than you do, so I'm not sure that it really helps you necessarily in doing your job. So I was thinking about the purpose of these committees and outreach and all these kinds of things. So I kind of am not sure that I want to continue with this model if it were up to me. I would have kind of a more informal model that would reduce staff time, that my, for example, the director of finance would be obligated to meet for one hour a month with a group of three people, who would be an informal group that could gather questions from the community. In general, this just seems like layer upon layer of resolution and revision and an obstacle in some sense of actually getting involved with the city and having your voice heard and being respected and getting your questions answered. When I was on the GPAC, I think my main reason for doing it was I wanted to learn about planning and about how decisions were made. I was certainly not in a position to give advice to anybody, though I'm sure I did give Mr. Graham advice from time to time. But I found that I was largely unqualified to really help him in any way. And clearly, there was an enormous effort by staff to prepare for these meetings, to run the meetings in a fairly formal way. And so I've been thinking about this lot. And if I oppose this and vote against it, it's because I'm really thinking we should look at this in a new way, a more fun way, a more relaxed way, to involve people in the community. I'm just not sure that this is the right direction to go, so.
Fair comments. Thank you. Appreciate that. Other comments? Councilmember Addis?
I'll just reiterate my thank you, and I'm prepared to move forward. I think you've done an excellent job, and I agree with the work that you've done. I agree with the changes to the schedule. I agree with the changes to the WRFCAC. I agree with the changes to the T-Bid. I agree with the changes to the handbooks. I think you've done a phenomenal job and done it very quickly, given the amount of work that that took.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, I want to agree with Councilmember Addis and also say that I agree with the subcommittee about cessation of the duties of the two special purpose advisory bodies and follow the recommendation that we open up the PWEB vacancies to WRFCAC and thank WRFCAC for their contributions and end their mission.
With that, I will entertain a motion. I think Councilmember Addis, you had-
I-
I'm sorry. Oh, I shouldn't open public comment, shouldn't I? Thank you. I will open public comment for item number C-1. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I'm saved, and I'll close public comment and bring it back to council and entertain a motion. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to move.
Okay. Councilmember McPherson, yes?
Well-
Go ahead, since you're a subcommittee member.
Is what I thought. I recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 104-19, approving the council policies and procedures, including the proposed amendments, and adopt Resolution Number 105-19, approving the advisory bodies handbook and bylaws, including changes to the qualifications for the T-Bid advisory board to include representation by owners and managers of permitted vacation rental properties.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson for staff report recommendations, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? Okay, if that, I'll take a rule call vote. You need us to address the issue of-
Oh, yes, there's the issue of, the resolutions are to cover the changes to the council policies and procedures, and there's proposed amendments, and also advisory bodies handbook and bylaws. Also, it addresses T-Bid. However, the third recommendation was to review the mission, purpose, and duration of existing special advisory bodies, and any of the changes or modifications that council might want to make would need to be presented to a separate-
Motion.
Motion by-
Yes, I was aware of that.
Okay, okay. We kind of knew that.
I just thought it was a separate motion.
Yes, okay.
So we'll start with this motion, and then we will, is that-
Yes.
Okay, so rule call vote.
I'm sorry, I may have missed what you said, but-
Motion by Councilmember McPherson to, for the staff recommendation, item number one and number two. Seconded by Councilmember Addis.
So the resolution, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, the resolution approving the advisory bodies handbook, will that resolution also incorporate the changes to meeting frequency that have been presented?
No.
Or you're going to make a separate motion on that? Because that's the resolution that adopts the changes.
Okay. Including, I'll amend the motion then to say Resolution Number 105-19, approving the advisory bodies handbook and bylaws, including the T-Bid advisory board recommendations, and also the change frequency for advisory board meetings as recommended by staff.
And could you include the other changes that I referenced that were made-
And the changes made by Ms. Spagnola.
Okay. So we do have a motion by Councilmember McPherson. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. Thank you, staff, for working with us. A second by Councilmember Addis, and I'll open it up for discussion again. Hearing none, rule call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you. That, and again, thank you, Councilmember McPherson, for your teamwork with me on this.
Well, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and thank you. And then we'll, yeah, thank you. We need to go ahead with the second part of the motion there.
Yes. I also recommend that we terminate the two existing special advisory bodies, that being the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, and the Water Reclamation Facilities Citizen Advisory Committee.
Second.
And do I need a date in that, by?
Yes. Or suggested.
A suggested date that would be immediately because we want to allow people to actually apply for the positions on PWEB, so.
And if you'd like to give preference for the vacancies to the former members of those two advisory boards, then that could be part of your motion as well.
Okay. Yes, we would give preference to members of the WRFCAC on the PWEB.
Okay.
Although I, all right, I won't say that.
So I'm going to ask you to restate the original motion.
I will restate, yes, yes, the original-
So we're all clear.
The original motion. I move that we terminate the two special advisory bodies, the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, effective immediately.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson, seconded by Councilmember Addis, and I'll open it up for any discussion. Seeing none, rule call vote.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Okay, I think that concludes this item. Mr. City Attorney, am I correct? I'm just trying to look through all the-
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate that. I didn't want to miss some. It's a lengthy number of pages here.
Yeah.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to do that work for you. We enjoyed it immensely. We did. Okay, that moves us to item C-2. Let me just get organized here. This is consideration of adoption of urgency ordinance number 629, approving just cause eviction protections and rental increase limits. I, at the advice of council, will be recusing myself from this as I am owner of vacation rentals, not vacation rentals, I'm sorry, of rentals in this community, not vacation rentals. Of- Not vacation rentals, I'm sorry, of rentals in this community, not vacation rentals. Single-family residence rentals in this community, and on the advice of council, after discussing with our city attorney, I feel more comfortable recusing myself. I will turn the meeting over to Mayor Protam Davis to run this portion. I'll step down from the dais and be back after the issue is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. We'll give you a few minutes to take your place in the audience. Okay. Yeah. Mr. Collins, will you take the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. So staff is recommending that city council consider adoption of an urgency ordinance, by number and title only with further reading waived, urgency ordinance number 629, urgency ordinance of the city council of the City of Morro Bay, California, adopting just cause eviction protections and rental rate limits effective immediately, to be in effect until the 1st of January 2020. There is no fiscal impact related to this approval recommendation. The provisions of this ordinance would not be directly enforced by the city, so there are no implementation costs. As council and community members are likely aware, earlier this year, the California State Legislature passed and was signed by the Governor Assembly Bill 1482, or AB 1482, for the remainder of this presentation, was signed into law by the governor in October of 2019 to go into effect the 1st of January of next year. This was established to protect renters from just cause... or to provide a just cause eviction protection to tenants in the state of California, and also rent increase limits, as we're dealing with one of the most difficult and pressing housing shortages and housing crises in the nation and probably in the world, and just trying to find solutions where they avail themselves. And this was a long, drawn-out discussion between apartment complex associations and rental right protection agencies and the like to come up with a compromise solution on this issue. So in the meantime, after that was passed, some residents in the community and across California, quite frankly, were concerned that this would trigger evictions to get ahead of the impending change, that folks, in essence, would be forced out, and that way those landlords could raise the rate significantly to account for the change by AB 1482. So cities across the state have been enacting urgency ordinances to account for that, to extend those protections, if you will, beginning whenever they enact those ordinances up until the time the state's law takes effect. And there have been concerns about residents... from residents in the county of San Luis Obispo, who've reached out to their elected representatives and city managers, asking for relief if possible. Currently, we do not require just cause for termination in the City of Morro Bay of any residential tenancy. We have received requests to adopt an urgency ordinance, and typically, as council knows, the way items make their way onto your agenda is through the future agenda item process or through the goals process. You know, the city manager in this case made... I myself made the decision to put this on the agenda. The mayor, as you understand, has been conflicted out. It's not the typical way to do that, but because of the fact that council's adopted a goal of addressing affordable housing, and because of the kind of the acute nature of this and the timing, I made the decision to bring this forward for your consideration. There wasn't a second meeting in November. That's where we would have put that on for a future agenda item consideration. So just wanted to make that clear. We have provided attachments, which is the urgency ordinance for your consideration. Includes the just cause eviction requirements, as well as rent increase limits, consistent with AB 1482. In essence, the just cause protections means that, you know, there has to be a fault for someone to be evicted. They can't simply just be asked to leave. And unless the case, the landlord's going to move into their own home, that's obviously an exemption. But really, again, trying to provide protections from those who may be victims of a late move ahead of the AB 1482 going into effect. As far as the rent increases are concerned, what AB 1482 do is done is create a formula where landlords are allowed to avail themselves of increases that are CPI plus 5% and cannot exceed 10% in total. You know, there are instances where folks' rents are being raised 50% at a time, and you know, going from... I mean, the average rental in this county is probably about $2,000 a month, and if you have an increase of 20% or 30% on top of that, it could push people out, you know, into less desirable locations or moving further and further away from their place of work, from their place of where their children go to school, from all those things. It makes all of our issues more impacted, including greenhouse gas emissions. So in essence, what we're requesting of council is to consider extending those protections, both on the rent increases, as well as the just cause eviction, to this date if it's adopted under an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Sections 36934 and 36937B. And just by way of information, several city councils in the state of California have adopted these types of protections, including Goberbeach and San Luis Obispo in our county, as well as Los Angeles, San Mateo, Redwood City, Daly City, Milpitas, and others are considering similar urgency ordinances to provide that gap protection until it goes into effect for the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have or any concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And do we have any questions from council? Marlis?
Sure. Well, this really has to do, I think it might be Chris's question, but could you just explain the retroactive provisions in AB 1482? And because when I read it, it sounded like we really didn't need to include that in our ordinance, because when it takes effect, it's retroactive back to March. So if you could just explain why ours includes that and what the retroactive provision is.
Yeah, the provision is simply to maintain consistency with AB 1482, and the retroactive component of this is that all the way back into March of 2019, if somebody experiences an increase above that 10%, then it would... when the law goes into effect, it would roll back to that level to not exceed 10%. But the landlord would not have to, in essence, pay back those overages. So that's sort of, again, one of those compromises that were built into AB 1482. Maybe Chris can go a little bit further as to why it's part of the provisions for council consideration.
It just gives a greater emphasis to the fact that Morro Bay supports the full package here. The big issue is the just cause evictions, because there have been reports of folks being evicted, you know, ahead of the January 1 deadline. So that's really the driver behind this, but to just essentially support the whole package is why it's mirrored here.
Okay. And then my other question, it does not address the issue of any overpayment. So somebody who may have had a rate increase, that money does not get back to the tenant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And our ordinance does not deal with that at all?
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
If I may provide some additional information about the retroactivity, because the rent provision took effect March 15th, the eviction does not take effect until January 1. So if a landlord wishes to increase the rent beyond the legal cap, that person can evict a tenant between now and January 1, and then establish a new rent threshold for a new renter.
Thanks.
Are there any other council questions? All right, I'll open it for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward and speak to the issue, now is the time. You do not have to identify yourself.
Remain anonymous.
First of all, my name is John Heading, a citizen of Morro Bay. I have two rental units in the community, and I want to thank council for the nice new chairs that you have for the audience first. Really appreciate that, very comfortable. I want to, as a citizen, encourage you to consider implementing this urgency ordinance. I think it is necessary to protect those in our community from potential evictions. I think the window is short. It allows the council 21 days of protection for people, and we've heard some... I've heard some horror stories across the state of people actually getting evicted in anticipation of this going into effect. So I highly support this and urge you to, as a council, pass this to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heading. Is there any other public comment?
And Mr. Mayor Protam, if I could, just to clarify for everyone, the mayor, of course, recused himself from the discussion and the pending vote on this matter, but it's clear under California law, under Regulation 18704, under the FPPC, that the recused member, the mayor, right now can appear as a member of the general public and provide public comment. So in case anybody was wondering why the mayor came up and spoke as a citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. Is there any other public comment? I see no one coming forward, so I will close public comment, bring it back to council, and invite discussion or a motion if anyone so desires.
I'll move to approve the urgency ordinance number 629, the just cause eviction protection and rental increase limits.
Second.
And if I could add, with further reading waived...
With further, yes.
By title only.
Okay. With further reading waived by title only.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Addis, and seconded by Councilmember McPherson. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0-1.
All right. Thank you very much. And now let us move on to Agenda Item C-3, having to do with the partnership policy. And seeing that the mayor has returned to the dais, I will turn the floor over to him.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for handling that portion of the meeting. Let me find my place here. That brings us to item number C-3, review and modifications to the city partnership policy and city partnership policy guidance document, and discussion of city event policies. I will turn it over to our city manager for discussion. Thank you.
Yes, so the recommendation is for council to rescind Resolution Number 3616, adopt Resolution Number 10619, review and approve stack recommended changes to the partnership policy and partnership policy guidelines document, and provide direction for a future discussion of the city review of event policies. There is no immediate fiscal impact related to the proposed changes. However, you know, should the city or the council extend partnerships to other organizations, there may be fiscal impact, and those would be assessed as they come forward to the city. It depends on the nature... The level of fiscal impact depends on the nature of the agreement. By way of background, the city council approved originally partnership policy as one of its action items under the city goals process, actually in 2018, and then moved into the 2019-20 goals under the major goal of improving community engagement. We have reviewed and made recommendations to the partnership policy, and those are here before you, and going to give a quick overview of the partnership policy. In addition to this, they were discussed sort of in the context of the fee study that was recently adopted. As it exists today, the partnership policy and guidelines was adopted in 2016 by city council. That was a revision of the original done in 2014. And ultimately, what these are designed to do is to develop and facilitate mutually beneficial agreements with nonprofit organizations typically that serve the purpose of that nonprofit, but also of the city specifically. There are arrangements that are established that have mutual benefit, that also helps provide a service that the city may not be able to do, or can't do as efficiently or as effectively. We've had a number of informal arrangements that were in place prior to the original adoption of this policy in 14, and the revisions really, again, were intended to formalize those arrangements so that staff wasn't trying to guess and trying to find out, well, when did this agreement happen? Well, we don't know. That's always... Sort of always been that way. And then there was a lot of those sort of arrangements that had been put in place, and when you have change at the top, those things get lost in transition. So really, this was a move by the city to try to formalize things that were actually beneficial to the city, we just needed to put the documentation around it. So that was the outset of what the intention was, and it established a process by which there was kind of clear guidelines and consistency and fairness to other organizations that would want to maybe consider a similar formal arrangement. The current policy really defines the partnership as an idea... Identified as an idea or concept involving the City of Morro Bay Recreation Services Division or another city department or division, and one or more different agencies, typically nonprofits or governmental, which outlines a method to combine resources together to, again, provide a service for the city or some other benefit to the city in a way that the city couldn't do so itself, or maybe couldn't do as effectively. In addition to sort of discussing the intent of the policy, the guidelines document, which is exhibit A to the resolution, outlines the process by which folks can apply for a partnership agreement, the requirements of those, and the criteria used to evaluate it by the city. Through the guidelines, the city is seeking to understand the benefits that would be accrued to us, to the community and the organization through a partnership. So far, since 2014-16, there really has only been three formal arrangements made, and I think part of that was because this policy, well thought out, was well crafted in many respects by a deputy city manager who left, you know, shortly after this was put in place. So we got some of those arrangements put together, and there was probably ideas of other ones that were out there. An individual left the city, the person who replaced them had new duties when he came on, and then he left the city. So I think in a lot of respects, it was off to a good start, but then didn't get very far. But the three that have been formalized are the Project Surf Camp Agreement, the Estero Bay Community Foundation, as well as the Estero Bay Radio. Project Surf Camp, city council recently extended that agreement, and they provide a pretty amazing service to special needs kids, one-of-a-kind kind of surf, stand-up, paddle, you know, experience, if you will, for these individuals who maybe have never touched the ocean before or in a safe environment to actually experience the sensation of standing up on a surfboard or paddleboard, and it's life-altering for these individuals, and it's a service the city would sure would love to provide, but can't at the same rate that they're able to, because they're nonprofit, because they're heavily staffed by volunteers. The value to that organization for us in providing the beach space and the storage space is about $11,000 annually. In return, they provide that affordable service to special needs children. The Estero Bay Community Foundation does significant fundraising for our recreation programs in the form of scholarships to at-risk youth in Morro Bay and as well as Los Osos and Cayucas and further beyond. So these individuals can participate in our rec leagues, art programs, et cetera. I think last year, the community foundation raised, I think, in excess of $50,000, and they also extended scholarships to kids to learn how to swim, and over 100, I think 150 kids learned how to swim last summer because of the Estero Bay Community Foundation. So in exchange for those donations, that fundraising activity, we provide them the space, the city's space, for them to hold meetings and to hold their fundraising events. It's an approximate value of about $3,000 annually to them. And the Estero Bay radio station rents space out of the visitor center, which the city owns. They are a nonprofit, listener-supported community radio located in Morro Bay. They provide the city with airwaves to share important information and engage with our community. In exchange for that, they get a reduced rent to the city and also are able to use our facilities for their fundraising activity. The approximate value of that is about $2,500 annually. So while we've, again, sort of got off to a good start and formalized some of these partnerships, there may have been other considerations that we're not aware of, they don't have the notes. There are other existing informal arrangements with the city that we believe would fit nicely and... into this partnership agreement, and we'll discuss those a little bit later. So as far as recommendations, really good input from several councillors, particularly Councilmember McPherson, about some improvements that could be made. I really appreciate those comments. In rescinding Resolution 3616 and adopting the new one, 10619, we really think there's an opportunity to enlarge the program that goes beyond recreation services. And really, throughout the guidance document, we made sure to edit wherever there was recreation services, we just made it generally about the city, because there are many other departments, also the city manager's office and others that consider partnerships. So we're really trying to take the focus and emphasis away from recreation, not that we don't want more of those, but this is really a City of Morro Bay program. The adopted program was removed from that document because the city council has formally adopted a Adopt Morro Bay program, which is around beautification, around, you know, putting names to street furniture and really trying to help beautify the community. So that's a standalone program with its own budget. So we removed that from the partnership agreement. And also took some efforts to reduce the burden on proposing organizations in terms of what questions they need to answer, really trying to make it pertinent to what their overall mission is and what they're trying to accomplish. We don't want to make this overly burdensome. We want the salient information to be exchanged so we can develop a really good, thoughtful agreement for either the city manager or the city council to consider for formalizing. City council may desire to add additional modifications to this, but we believe that the policy was off to a good start, and we needed to make some modifications and really think about how to take this opportunity to broadcast to the community. We're open for business, and this is really an entrepreneurial policy. That's what this is about. The city, for a while, has been sort of facing, you know, tough choices about the programs that we can provide and how we conduct ourselves, and this is one of those opportunities to really think differently about how we do business. So staff is aware of several organizations that have, probably would qualify for partnership agreement. We have a very successful Monday night dinner program. Free meals are provided to nearly 100 residents in Morro Bay every Monday here. Very committed volunteer group go out of their ways, you know, using each other's freezers and just, I mean, I don't know how they pull it off, but every Monday, a very healthy meal for folks who are, you know, having a tough go in it. And currently, we don't assess them any facility fees. We don't have a formal agreement. We have to figure out how to assess risk and all those things. So putting them under an agreement where we can formalize, hey, you know, we want to honor the good work you're doing, let's formalize it. We don't want to charge you fees, but we need to figure out how to make that a formal partnership. The Lions Club provides numerous volunteers for city events, whether it's the Fourth of July event, Amgen, and other city-sponsored events. They're out there in force. And in return, you know, they do use our facility here for their meetings, and we don't charge them for that, but we think it makes sense if we want to encourage that to make a formal agreement out of that. And there are probably other similarly situated organizations like the Thanksgiving Dinner, again, where we sort of offer our facility in return for an amazing community event. So those are some of the considerations that we have at this time. And then I also wanted to make clear that, you know, staff heard loud and clear that there's an interest in looking at the oversight of public events that occur in our community. They are a reflection of who we are and the culture of our community, and also we are a tourist destination, and that's part of it as well as promoting ourselves. So we understand the interest in looking at oversight. Staff also thinks we need to place that in a larger context of overall event policies. We have a pretty good event review process, but it's not formalized in the ordinance. We don't have a formal way of necessarily conditioning and then enforcing those conditions and potentially asking folks to, no, don't come back next year, or don't come back ever again, because you failed and all these respects. We don't necessarily have a legal basis for that. So this is an opportune time to really review those policies, look at other communities and how they're doing that, and understand how we can improve upon where we are today. So we want to bring that larger discussion back sometime in 2020, probably springtime. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate that very much. Any questions for Scott on this? We'll open it up to council questions? Yes. Marlese, go ahead.
I always have questions. I can't help it. Scott answered some of my questions already, but I, as I heard the presentations, more occurred to me. So I'm just going to ask a couple that I already asked, just for the sake of everyone I appreciate that it's loosely kind of formulated so that you include both project-oriented but long-term partnerships. Would there be any advantage to treating them differently, or how would you evaluate on a more regular basis? I guess I'm curious about how this would come back in terms of evaluating them in the future.
Yeah. As far as evaluating the partnerships, you know, I think, you know, we could set the parameters that's, you know, on a two-year schedule or something like that, where, you know, you have an ability as council to kind of check and see how that's going. I think an annual review may be overly burdensome. And I think we naturally would treat partnerships from a project basis versus a programmatic basis a little differently. Again, we're still going to want to know the obvious, you know, the Ws and the hows and all that, and the risk, and, you know, what they're putting on the table, what we're putting on the table. But again, not interested in making this overly burdensome. That's the last thing we want to do. We just want to make sure we were able to have a formal agreement that both sides completely understand. And the other question is sort of, should all those come to council? That's sort of what we've been doing and totally fine with that, but right now, the policy is a little unclear. Intentionally, perhaps, that maybe some of them we don't need to if they're smaller, but that's kind of an open question for council.
Right. I noticed it was open, and that was a question I asked, because if we're going to not have everyone come to council, we need some idea of when they do over some amount or something to suggest when the council should get involved. But hopefully, we can discuss that when we discuss the policy. So would events qualify for this?
We've, you know, events were, I don't necessarily think they were considered for this, though, not necessarily would exclude them from that. You know, the one thing to note is that there was sort of this sponsorship policy, which then migrated into the tourism grant process. You know, as councils are aware, we, city's been providing funding from the general fund to T-Bid. Then they've been using those funds for several years to fund and incentivize certain events that have shown that they've done well, that kind of trigger some of the broader goals of tourism, like shoulder seasons, trying to flatten out those, the shark fins, if you will, that Erica pointed to earlier. Like, we want more shoulder season events, like the Bird Festival, for instance. So, you know, they do put, you know, anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 into that pool to incentivize the types of events we want to see. So though, in a lot of ways, that process addresses events on that basis, but not necessarily opposed to it. It's just, I think they're looking more broadly. Now, for instance, the community foundation gets a reduction on their event, if you will, but it's more of a formal partnership because of what they provide the city in a specific service. The service being, we are going to, or funding, we're going to give funding to the kids who use your services who otherwise couldn't afford it, you know.
Right. And I guess my question is, if an event didn't get funding through T-Bid, but could provide, could demonstrate that they are providing a service or a benefit to the community, could they apply for this?
I think at this point, you'd want to make that clear delineation. What the policy envisions is a service or a kind of tangible object, you know, like a project, for instance, or a service. So this would sort of, a benefit is a little more esoteric, I guess, in this regard, and that would, I think we'd want to have that spelled out clearly. The more that it's sort of, is amorphous, the more it sort of creates the issues that the city was trying to resolve, I think, in the first place with the partnership policy.
You're hedging.
Yeah. I mean, I'm taking, I put it out there, I'm just saying that I think, I think events has their place, and it's with the tourism grants. That's just my perspective.
Okay, but you're also talking about bringing back something about oversight of events, so that's a separate policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And how would we be publicizing this to other organizations, other community organizations, to let them know that this partnership is available?
I think, you know, obviously, putting it on the city website is one tool, you know, kind of in our interactions in daily life, you know, we're all members of different organizations and putting it out there. You know, my interactions with folks, you know, whether it's Historical Society, or Rotary, or Kiwanis, or whatever the case may be, I mean, just kind of throwing that out there. And we actually have potential opportunity with a local church to do, help with one of our projects we can't fund. So there, you know, it's sort of, is an opportunity, like, once you sort of get the ball rolling, you get, oh, wow, you know, I'd be interested in doing something like that, too.
And my last question, in approving the resolution, would we also be adopting your proposal guidelines, or would that be subject to editing?
Exhibit A, is that that document?
Is the document.
Yes, ma'am. So you could do it on the fly or bring it back, whatever you prefer?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Totally.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? No. With that, I will go ahead and open up public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on Agenda Item C3, please come forward now. Welcome, Mimi.
Hi. Good late evening, you guys. My name's Mimi Goldberg, and I would like to address this. So the local people, they didn't know that we were having a triathlon, and they didn't know that we were having the West Surf Association, aka WSA, here on the beach. They didn't know, our locals had no clue. I volunteered for both. And they, if we could some way get out there, because this was a really cool thing, like, really cool. People came from all over to participate in both these events. And I think really, the town should focus on that, getting that out there, because it's a really healthy, family-oriented events at Morro Bay, like, totally, it's great, okay? And so please put that out there. Oh. Okay. And the city's tourism, you talked about that. Well, Jennifer already said that the $900,000 she has, she's picking who to send to come here. She's not sending it to Bakersfield. She already said that. She's sending a little bit. And she's picking who gets, who picks she wants to come here. I think you guys should make it so that way, everybody from every, you know, from anywhere can come here, not just where you guys want them to come from. They should be coming from anywhere, and then maybe they'll plant a seed, you know, for their kids. Or it's just a great place to raise your children, and I don't think they should pick which towns to bring here. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi. Public comment is still open for Item C3. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to council. I'll open it up. Mr. Collins and whomever helped you with this, I think you've done an excellent job. The City of Stockton, after bankruptcy, created a policy that was similar to this and experienced a huge surge in community volunteerism because of a formalized call to action to the community to be involved, realizing that there were financial shortfalls and difficulties, and it was embraced by a number of not-for-profit organizations, community organizations that you've identified, et cetera. This policy, in my mind, will assist us in providing guidelines to do something similar. We're not bankrupt, I'm not saying that we're bankrupt, but we do have a need for increased volunteerism, and this, I believe, formalizes the process and the procedure, and also decreases the burden on volunteer organizations that would want to be involved with the city for some of the projects that potentially are out there. One thing I would encourage is that you consider establishing a budget line item each year that would allow staff the authority to operate within that budget amount, and that anything that exceeded that would have to come to council for approval. And then, secondarily, I think that fairly routine reporting on the success of any organizations that are involved in this process be brought to council. I'm not saying it has to be quarterly, but as staff deems appropriate so that we could be informed of successes or failures of the policy itself. And so for that, I do support the staff report and the guidelines. I think they're quite excellent, and I would suggest that council allow staff to come back with a recommendation on a budget line item for this next year, fiscal year, or next period, or remainder, or budget adjustment, whatever, so that we have some kind of idea of what potential cost limitations there would be for that. And then, lastly, I do support bringing back the review of the events policy as stated here. I think Councilmember Heller tried to agendize that, and I agree very much with your comments that were made. I felt that it would be coming, staff knowing that, coming back, because staff was bringing this forward. That's why I didn't support the agenda. I just wanted to follow up with you on that. But I very much do support your recommendation with that as well. So those are my comments. Thank you. Any further comments?
Well, yeah. I want to thank the city manager for doing this. This was something that I requested some time ago, and I really appreciate the effort that was put into it. And I also support it. I slightly disagree with the mayor. I personally would like to see who we are going to be giving money to, and it could certainly just be on a consent agenda, but because, I mean, I think the council needs to know who we have partnerships with in the city, and that's one way to know it. I'm happy to have a budget item so we kind of know about how much we want to spend on it, but somehow, I'd like to know who we have partnerships with. And I feel that maybe the council should weigh in even on consent, so.
Yeah. And I think I said that. I would want to have routine reports on what we're, who we're engaged with under the auspices of that. I'll try, wait, any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate your comments about that. And I am concerned that every event that we have is in reflection on Morro Bay. We've had this discussion, so I appreciate you putting this on something that we'll bring back in the spring. I want to make sure, from a financial standpoint, the city's getting reimbursed for the services we're providing for these events, and also that we're really thinking about the brand when we approve events and get involved as much as we need to be to make sure that it's an event that reflects what we want Morro Bay to be. So I appreciate you acknowledging that. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments.
Sure. Absolutely. Councilmember Addis or Davis?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Saw both hands moving.
Scott, the mayor's mentioned a budget line item, but the partnership agreements that we have in effect now with Project Surf Camp, Community Foundation, and Estero Bay Radio are not budgeted items, they are fee waivers. How do you, do you have a vision of how we would be budgeting actual money in a partnership policy?
I don't write at this time, but I imagine we could come up with something, or we can just make it part of the budget presentation to say, this is what we anticipate in terms of fee reductions as a result of the formal partnerships, and maybe it's just sort of a qualitative measure. The way that kind of the government looks at, the federal government looks at is that it's... it's an actual expenditure vis a vis of subsidization. That's a word we're not using here, but that's sort of how they reflect, you know, tax policy that leads to reduction in tax revenue. It's an offset expenditure. So we could do it that way, but I think probably the finance director would want to weigh in on that. So at this time, I don't have like a clear-cut idea, but one idea is just to present kind of the qualitative piece as a bullet point in the budget presentation.
Okay. Yeah, that's just something that I wanted to think about because even the organizations you would be reaching out to are organizations that are currently using facilities and not paying fees, and we simply want to establish a formal relationship.
Correct. There could be other partnerships where that's not the case, that we haven't conceived of yet. So I think we're open to suggestions. It sounds like this is something that we can think about a little bit more since it wouldn't take place until the next budget, which is several months from now. But good food for thought for now.
Thanks.
Councilmember Addis?
I was just going to appreciate what you said about this, what the mayor said about the Stockton policy. And I think this is the exact kind of thinking that we need in terms of buoying ourselves up instead of making cuts that ultimately don't really serve us. And I appreciate the work on the policy. I was excited. We got an email about Monday night dinners that said they had served 22,000 guests. I just want to kind of reiterate that. 22,000 guests since they started in 2014. That's the exact kind of organization that we would have, want to have an official partnership with, I believe. And so I'm glad to see that the application will be a bit more streamlined, but that's an organization that has served that many people over the years would be able to be in a former, formal partnership with us. And I just see a lot of gains coming from this kind of a policy, and I appreciate your work on it. So thank you.
I think I've captured everything, and I think I can put it into motion that captures what Councilmember Davis said and what Councilmember McPherson and, well, everybody said, and I'll try it out and see how it works. So I would move that the council rescind Resolution Number 36-16 and adopt Resolution Number 106-19, that we approve the staff recommended changes to the partnership policy and the partnership policy guidelines document, and that staff bring back a mechanism to establish authority limits under which you can operate without council approval. That's my generic language for budget. And that you establish routine reporting to the council on all projects, either via consent or, if it needs to be, an action item, an action item.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Heding, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Did I get it? Oh, good. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heding.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
My second motion is with regard to C3. If I didn't say it to begin with, is that, I got to find the language. Staff be asked to bring back, where is it? The event stuff, where is it? What page? Last paragraph? Last paragraph? On page number? Oh, here we go. Bring back a discussion about events in the city with consideration of the city's level of involvement in the oversight of events, and that that be brought back in the spring of 2020.
Second.
Can I just broadly, that plus just broadly events policies generally, just so we have that bigger umbrella? Thank you.
Yes. Clarify that.
So clarified. Second.
So motion by Mayor Heding, second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? None, we'll take a roll call vote on that part.
Mayor Heding.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great discussion. Thank you for that. Very exciting. That brings us to Item C-4. This is review and approve the Second Amendment to the employment contract with our city manager, Mr. Scott Collins. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Niermaier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject, as just mentioned, is the Second Amendment to Employment Contract with City Manager Scott Collins. The recommendation is that council consider approving the Second Amendment to the contract through authorizing the mayor to sign the Second Amendment and approving Budget Resolution Number 107-19. Scott Collins has been city manager for about 26 months now, when a contract was entered into between City of Morro Bay and Scott Collins to be the city manager. Performance review was just conducted, a confidential performance review by the city council, which was held on November 13th, 2019, for covering the year prior to that. After it was successfully and satisfactorily completed, city council and city manager both agreed in closed session on some changes to the contract for the city manager. City manager did not ask for a salary increase. Instead, he asked for $75 a month stipend for life insurance, $2,000 annually for deferred compensation, and an increase of three months to a severance package if he was terminated without cause. That would not apply if he was terminated for cause or if he quit. The fiscal impact to the city would be approximately $2,900 a year, and if the city manager was terminated without cause, that extra three months would be approximately $48,000 to the city. There's also a government code that was effective in January of 2018, which provides that there must be an oral report by the legislative body on any changes like this to the city manager's contract. So to ensure complete and perhaps overbroad compliance with that government code, I would ask the mayor to read into the record on Page 2 of the staff report, Page 442 of the whole agenda, the three bullet items, which in compliance with Government Code 54953-C3 will be a summary of the changes being recommended to the city manager's contract.
Thank you, Mr. Niermaier. The city will provide a monthly stipend of $75 for purchase of additional life insurance to our city manager. The city's annual contribution to deferred compensation will total $7,500, which is an increase of $2,000 per year. And the city's severance pay in event of termination without cause will be equal to monthly-based salary then-in-effect multiplied by nine. That is the recommendation. I will also add that Mr. Collins went through a very extensive evaluation process. We have a number of criteria that he's evaluated on. Not only was he evaluated by the council, but we received input from department heads as well as city attorney, et cetera. And Mr. Collins's performance and the council's consideration has been outstanding. We're very glad that he is continuing with us. And I just want to make special note of the fact that he is not requesting a merit increase, and I just needed to call that to your attention. So with that, I would entertain a motion, unless there's further discussion.
I move that council approve the Second Amendment to the employment contract with Scott Collins, city manager, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city and adopt Resolution Number 107-19 approving the related budget adjustment.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor, notwithstanding the audience is sparse, we do want to allow an opportunity for public comment.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry about that. So I'll open up public comment for Item C-4. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now regarding this item. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Thank you, Chris, for that. Sorry about that. And we have a motion by Councilmember Davis. Which runner did the tie go to? So, second by Councilmember Addis. And any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Heding.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. That brings us to Item D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Any items you'd like us to consider? Any members looking to my right? None. Looking to my left? Councilmember Addis? Sure.
I was just wondering if we had timing. We had talked about bringing forward a staff report on what the City of Morro Bay might be able to do around gun safety, and I was wondering if we had any thoughts on timing about that.
Yeah, I could respond to that unless, Mr. Collins would like to. We're looking at the, if I recall correctly, January agenda or potentially February, depending upon the volume. It will be within those two-month, that two-month time window, because we've only got one meeting in January that is pretty compact, or pretty full now. So it may be moved to February.
I was hoping maybe late February to give us time.
Sure. Appreciate that.
Say one meeting in January?
No. Did I say that?
You did.
Well, I did. Well, hey, maybe we'll have two. Two meetings, no, one meeting in December. And so that has impacted January, obviously, significantly, so thank you.
So I was hoping it could come maybe the end of February.
Thank you.
To give us some time to get there.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, then I will adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, January 14th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Thank you. Good evening. Happy holidays and happy new year to our community.